Would you please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Members present from city council this evening are council members Kamara Sulak, CEO Del Orco, Dylan, Mayor Pro Tim Girbon, Mayor Marl. Ms. Kraus will be absent. From city staff, we have city manager O'Toole, clerk Royal, I believe is participating remotely. Assistant city manager Getzmann is here. City engineer Humphreys is with us, along with community development director Harrington, police chief Radzik, network administrator Schonk, PD budget analyst Terry. Who am I missing? Do we have, does legal counsel on the line this evening? No, okay. Oh, and Mr. Scherls, DPW director Scherls. Very good. At this time, the chair would, and I apologize, we welcome our guests here this evening. There are copies of the agenda on the back table, along with hearing devices if you would like one. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
Moved as submitted.
Moved by CEO to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamara Sulak. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to excuse the absence of Ms. Kraus?
So moved.
Was that Kamara Sulak?
Yes.
Okay, and seconded by CEO.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All those in favor of excusing the absence, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose say nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it, and the motion carries by majority. We move on to citizen comments on agenda items under the Open Meetings Act. Any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items? And I would defer to the city clerk. Did we receive any written communications in advance of tonight's meeting in which the comment ought to be read at this time?
Not at this time. I do have one for the public hearing.
Very good. There are no public comments. Then we'll proceed to presentation. First up is a presentation update on the preservation and promotion of the Bixby Marionette collection by some community members and some members of our city's own arts and culture committee. Am I inviting Catherine Downey up first to initiate this discussion? Please, Catherine, thank you for being here. If you'd be so kind to introduce your guests, that would be, that would be great.
Yes, so I'm Catherine Downey. I'm the head of arts and culture, and this is Aubrey and Matt Grossman. Matt's brother Eric was one of Meredith Bixby's apprentices.
Apprentice.
Yes. So they are from Cultureverse in Ann Arbor, and we've been working with them for about a year and a half on a digital project that will be a part of a potential Bixby museum, this part being a virtual kind of exhibit. So I'm going to turn the time over to them so they can explain that.
Very good.
Yeah, so my name is Aubrey Martenson, and I am the executive director of Cultureverse. And like Catherine said, we've been working with Catherine and the Arts and Culture Committee in providing services at no charge, which includes digitizing the marionettes with 3D scanners and placing them in a virtual environment. And Matt will talk a little bit more about the project and what we're doing. But since most of our work is happening in the basement out of sight, and one of the goals of our organization is to help unseen things be seen, we thought we would come and just update the community on the work we've been doing. Cultureverse is a year and a half old organization. We are based in Ann Arbor, and we were so interested to see what our technology could do to bring the Bixby marionettes to the light of day. That's one of our goals, is to bring unseen things to the public, to engage curiosity, to educate, as well as just to inspire people to do something like this. And you have an amazing collection. It is so rich and full of information that we're really excited to build some virtual spaces so that we can share it with the community and with people who are loving puppetry and marionettes across the globe, because what we're doing can be shared anywhere with a web link. And I think that's all I have to say, and I'll pass it over to Matt.
Very well stated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. As Catherine stated, my brother was Meredith Bixby's apprentice. I am currently director of design and implementation at Cultureverse, where I lead projects where we use technology to help artists and educators and preserve collections like this. I am also a Celine resident, and I'm proud to be supporting the community by working on this project. We've used a variety of technologies here, including 3D room scanning technology, 3D object scanning technology, and a lot of 3D art technologies in order to bring this project to life. These are the very same technologies that institutions like the Smithsonian and Metropolitan Museum of Art are using to maintain their collections. We were able to create 3D models or 3D scans of over a dozen marionettes in the collection. And then we were able to go into the space where the Celine Opera House existed, and we were able to create a scan of that space and then recreate the interior surfaces from photographs. And what we're in the process of doing right now is actually uniting the Bixby marionettes, the 3D models of them, with the 3D model of the Opera House space, along with the materials that have been digitized at various phases of the Bixby collection process over the years. And we're turning that into a virtual exhibit that you can all enjoy. We posted all of that on our website, and we're happy to provide links to that to all of you. You can explore it there, you can explore the virtual gallery, and hear a little bit more about the story of what we've done.
Marvelous. That's excellent. Catherine, are the links also available on the Arts and Culture Committee's webpage?
Not, not yet.
Okay.
But they will be soon.
Okay. If you could follow up, or your colleagues on the Arts and Culture Committee could follow up to ensure that that's done, that would be marvelous.
I will say real quick, in October, Mike Bixby's son flew out from Idaho so that he could visit the collection and see what we were doing with it. He, as a lawyer, was interested to make sure that we were continuing on with the trust agreement, and he, he has some concerns, but he, we assured him we're moving forward with making sure that the collection is kept safe. And he was able to see this, the website that they're creating, this virtual space that they're creating, and he was really impressed with it. It was really cool to watch him, to watch his face light up, to see his old friends, as he called them, come to life in a new way. So it was really, it was great to meet with him, and his sister Nora came out too, and we had dinner. So it was a really wonderful opportunity to kind of revisit the collection and for them to check in on how it's doing too, for their dad.
Catherine, apart from this initiative, which is marvelous, unrelated of course, can you comment briefly for council's benefit and for the public on the living history book that the Arts and Culture Committee collaborated with Jim Cameron on?
Yes.
Please.
Yes, so I just got an email yesterday, I think, from Nora Bixby's son, so Meredith Bixby's grandson, who lives in the area. He is now helping, trying to help us find some publishing opportunities. According to Jim Cameron, the manuscript now belongs to the Arts and Culture Committee and the city. He was just, he wanted to make sure it happened, that it came together. It is finished, we are just trying to figure out publishing at this point and what the most feasible option is. But Jim Cameron's goal, he really hopes that we can get it done early on next year, because it's a great book. I've read through it, it's really amazing, really well done, so hopefully we'll get that done very soon.
Excellent. And maybe follow up with my office later this week, because I may have some contacts for you.
Okay.
On the publishing front.
Great.
Very good. Are there questions for our guests? Either the two individuals who've worked on this initiative, or, of course Catherine has as well, or the chair of our Arts and Culture Committee. I'll start to, actually, I'll just start to my right and to my left. Mr. Kamara Sulak, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, just some, just some comments, since I commend all the work that the three of you and the Arts and Culture Committee and many others have put forth on this.
Thank you.
It really is a nice collection, historic, and so important to preserve and be able to, you know, present that part of Celine Bixby history. And I know it's taken a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of time, so I just want to say thank you, and there are many people that know all the time and energy that the committee and the organizations have put into it, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kamara Sulak. Mr. CEO, any comments or questions?
I'd just like to echo Kevin's comments and say that thank you very much. It sounds like an exciting project. I can hardly wait to see it and see these marionettes once again come to life. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Council member Dylan?
Thank you. I did have an opportunity to see some of the displays that are set up downstairs, and it is nice to see them with props and not just laid out, so kudos to you for that. So what is your long-term vision for the marionettes at this point? For the actual marionettes? Are we looking at adding them, seeing if they can go out on display, at an actual museum, tour them? You know, I just, I don't know that, I appreciate what you're doing with the, with the virtual, because it does give everyone an opportunity to see them, but we do still have the physical marionettes and understanding that they're going to need to be kept preserved.
Yeah. So our, our short-term goals have mostly been met in that we have them kind of preserved but not conserved. So we are working on the conservation efforts next. I am working with the U of M Museum of Art. Their museum studies program is hoping to have a couple of students come this next semester and work with us on what those next steps are, what the preservation and continued conservation would look like. And then we're also hopefully getting another student or two from the U of M School of Information, like we had this last winter semester, to help us hopefully finish the catalog, because we need a catalog in order to get more funding, and we need more funding to preserve the collection. So what we're working on right now is getting the catalog finished, getting the museum studies expertise, and the hope being that we will have some kind of museum like we used to have from 1998 to 2008, with independent funding not coming from the city but coming from other organizations. It's just a matter, a lot of places won't give you funding unless they know exactly what is in the collection, and so that's why we need to get that catalog finished first.
Thank you very much.
So I really, I do hope that we can have a museum. Meredith Bixby's kids are getting older, and they both, his daughter gave me the biggest hug and was like, I know you're going to get a museum going again. And I was like, oh my gosh, I have to get a museum going again, because she gave me this really sweet hug, and she's like 90 years old, so, or 80. But anyway, so yeah, that's, that's my goal, is to make sure that we do get a museum going as soon as we can, because it's a really cool thing. And I would like to have Eric Grossman teach how to use the marionettes, because I don't want that art form, that part of the art form to die. So that's the goal. But I know the city doesn't have the funding, so we're trying to work that out.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Girbon, any comments or questions for our guests?
Just appreciate what you're doing in this type of situation, because I know we're trying to extend all of our cultural assets to be able to be accessed any way that we can do. Actually, this might be a question for the Cultureverse. We have our Debo Museum and our Historical Farm Museum. Is that type of project that your group would take on in terms of scanning or documenting interiors and such for the?
Absolutely, yeah. It's, it, it of course depends on the, you know, your needs and our capabilities, but yeah, we're definitely open to that discussion.
Excellent, because some of this should be recorded. You never know, God forbid, that we'd have a fire or something like that, but when you lose an asset, you've lost it forever, so.
Absolutely, yeah. And the, the scanning of the spaces themselves is actually one of the easier things that we can do, so yeah, that's something that we can look at for sure.
Excellent, thank you.
I got to, I got to witness that, the scanning of a space, and it happens so fast, and it's really, it's, it's really cool, so.
Wonderful, thank you.
Council member Del Orco, any comments or questions?
No, just thanks for what you're doing to preserve the collection. I appreciate it.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you for your time.
Look forward to seeing you again soon. And we're going to transition to our second and last presentation of the evening, which is our annual 2022 audit presentation. Gentlemen, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves, and of course, I want to state for the record that your colleague Martin did give me an advance notice that he was unavailable this evening, but we are in very capable hands.
Thank you. My name is Josh Edie. I'm a senior manager with Plant Moran. With me today is Stephen Pacini, manager with Plant Moran, manager on this audit. I'd like to start by mentioning that the audit did receive an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level assurance we can give, that the financial statements are stated properly. Basically, what that means is that you can rely on the numbers within the financial statements. I'd also like to extend my thanks to Colleen and Elle and the whole team at the city for their work. There was a lot of work that goes into the audit, a new standard that was implemented this year that we'll circle back on here, and so their help was invaluable. There are three items that we've provided for you. The first is the letter to the council. We also have some slides that Stephen and I will be going through here in a little bit. And then there are the financials themselves, which we will not be going through in detail tonight, but happy to entertain any questions on them. So starting with the letter, this is the bookend to the letter that we sent out at the beginning of the audit, so if anything had deviated from that plan stated in the audit, this is where we would discuss that. This is also where we would discuss findings, or disagreements, or difficulties. Luckily, the audit went well, so this is mostly boilerplate. So I do want to cover just a few things in this letter. On the second page, there is a discussion of new accounting policies. If you recall that first letter, we anticipated an emphasis of matter paragraph in the financial statements for the implementation of GAZB 87, which is a new lease standard. However, the city's, city went through that exercise, and there's a lot of work that went into that, but determined that the impact would not have been material, and therefore it did not have to implement that, so you do not see any changes in your financials as a result of that standard. Two pages later, we have the past adjustments. These are adjustments that are not material to the financial statements, that we agree with the city are not material, but would have been booked had the city determined to. The first is just that the OPEB asset and total liability were both grossed up, basically overstated, the net OPEB liability, and the financial statements is not misstated at all. So minor issue there. And then the other one is just a credit that will now appear in fiscal year 2023 as opposed to fiscal year 2022. The last pages in here are full of a lot of good information that I encourage you to read through, some discussions around ARPA and various things related to that. The last couple pages cover additional standards that are coming up. In addition to the lease standard, there is a software component of that, which is in a separate standard, so that's coming up. If you work with public-public partnerships or public-private partnerships, there are some things there. But also on page eight, I would point out that with the pension and OPEB percentages, those continue to be well-funded as it relates to the state's percentages. The state requires 60% on the pension and 40% on OPEB. Now, the numbers you see here are gap percentages, not necessarily in compliance with Public Act 202, but that said, you are well above those thresholds. With that, I will hand over to the slides and Stephen to go through those.
Yep, so we'll start looking at, with looking at the general fund, and we'll look at the general fund's revenues first. So this first graph shows the general fund's revenues over the last five years broken out by source. We can see that most of these are pretty similar from '21 to '22, but you do see an increase in other sources, and that's mainly attributed to contribution revenue and increased permit revenue during the year. And if we go to the next graph, this will be similar to the previous one. This is just general fund, the expenditure side over the last five years, broken out by category. And again, here, you'll see a change in the other category. I mean, that's due to higher capital outlay expenditures this year related to storm drains, sidewalk improvements, park improvements. And then you'll see a bit of an increase in public safety expenditures as well. Those are mostly related to some personnel costs and some equipment purchases. On the next graph, this next graph shows the general fund's fund balance going back to 2012, and it's broken out by the portion of fund balance that's unassigned and the portion that is designated for future expenditures. You can see the, the yellow portion of the, of each bar represents the unassigned, and then the gray portion is the designated. So you can see fund balance did decrease this year to about $6.2 million in the general fund, and about $4.8 million of that is designated for future expenditures, and that's broken out further. You can see the detail of that in the financial statements under note 12. While it did decrease, I do want to note here too, that the city did have its, received ARPA funding during the year, but since that money had not been spent as of 6/30, that's recorded currently as an unearned revenue liability as of 6/30, so that revenue is not included in fund balance as of yet. And then moving on to the next graph, which shows six-year comparison of capital expenditures. You can see that capital expenditures increased this year from $4.9 million to $6.6 million. You can see how each category changed too. So the green, the green portion of each bar represents water and sewer expenditures, and that increased due to some water and sewer infrastructure projects, as well as meter improvements. And then the blue portion for the, for the general assets had increased due to sidewalk repairs and equipment, equipment purchases. And then the, the red portion is related to streets, and that decreased just due to fewer street projects this year than, than in the past. Moving on to graph, the next graph here, this is just a breakout of the mills paid by the principal and non-principal residences in the city, with the only difference here being the school operating millage paid by the non-principal residents. And then on the, the next graph, this graph shows a, how the city of Celine compares to neighboring communities in regards to the mills, millage rates. So you can see this, Celine is represented by the red line on this graph, and it does, you'll see tracks very closely to its neighboring communities, Ann Arbor, Mylan, Ypsilanti, and Chelsea. And then this next graph, if you go to the next one, this is, just shows a comparison of the taxable value of properties in the city compared to the state equalized value of properties in the city. And main takeaway here is that since the drop in values in 2008, they have been steadily increasing since then. That increase is just limited each year to the lesser of 5% or inflation due to the Headley Amendment. With that, we'll.
And so on the next slide then, we're looking at the Recreation Complex Fund, and you can
see how things have started to rebound after COVID. So revenue and expenditures are both up a little bit, by $250,000 and $176,000 respectively. Do note that 2018, we do have a note in here, that was much higher due to bond proceeds and expenditures that those bonds were covering in that year, so I wouldn't expect it to jump quite up to that in a future year here. The next slide is the Water Fund. You will see here that operating revenue decreased in the current year by 11% to $2,223,000, and operating expenditures increased by about 20% to $1,971,000. The rates went down for water, that's one of the big drivers for the revenue coming down. Expenditures are up, mostly due to cost of water, as well as some OPEB costs. The next slide similarly shows the Sewer Fund for the last five years. On the other hand, opposed to the water, the operating revenue increased here about 16% as the rates increased in the current year. Operating expenses went up 34%, again, due to cost of sewer treatment, as well as some pension and OPEB costs and various personal costs. The last slide I would look at here is the unfunded legacy costs. So what we have here are the pension and OPEB costs, and the idea here is we wanted to show what they are right now in the financial statements, as well as the kind of difference that 1% in one of the assumptions could make. So pension currently is at $9.4 million, but if we change the discount rate to 6.25%, that liability would go up to $12.9 million. Similarly, the OPEB is at $1.4 million, and if we change that, it would go up to $3.1 million, and that's the healthcare trend rate on that. While I'm on this slide, I would also point out that the Celine Area Fire Department also has OPEB costs, that the city has a portion of to be responsible for. If you were to look at those financial statements, and actually in your financial statements, you will see that the city's share in that joint venture is a liability currently of $896,000. And if you were to break that out and say, what's the, use that same math to say, okay, what's our proportion of the OPEB liability? That would be $1,093,000. So I wanted to point out that that is in your financial statements, but it's not included in this particular slide or those particular footnotes that you would have, as those relate to only the city's portion. And that brings us to the conclusion of our prepared remarks, but we would entertain any questions that you may have.
Let me first start with the city manager. City manager O'Toole, in the city treasurer's absence, is there any comment that you would like to make this evening?
The only comment I would make is that per our general fund, fund balance policy, Treasurer Cole and I will be presenting at the next city council meeting, so December 19th, on measures to improve that unrestricted fund balance status.
You actually stole my thunder, because that was the announcement that I was going to make for council's benefit and for the public. So we have a work meeting scheduled in two weeks at 5:00 PM, I believe, if that's not mistaken, to discuss a corrective action plan. And this is in reference to page four of the audit presentation, where it shows that our unassigned fund balance dipped from 25% in 2021 to 12% or so in 2022. And as my colleagues will recall, our fund balance policy, which was first adopted in 2013, outlines that as an organization, we should commit to an unassigned fund balance between 15 and 20%. If it exceeds 20%, it outlines areas in which those dollars can be spent. If it dips below 15%, it requires a corrective action plan. So I believe between the city treasurer and the city manager, they have met with all of the various stakeholders and department heads, and will be providing a laundry list of options that are a combination of either cost-cutting measures or initiatives to enhance revenue or infuse the organization with new dollars. We will have that discussion in two weeks' time. Gentlemen, I do not have any questions for you, because we had the opportunity to sit down about two weeks ago to go over the presentation. Thank you as always. I think this was clear and succinct. Again, I'll start to my right and to my left. If you want to take about five minutes to make comments or questions to either city staff or our guests from Plant Moran, I'll begin with council member Kamara Sulak.
Yes, thank you for the colorful presentation. I guess the only question I would have is our overall audit, our overall health with all considerations and how, not just how the market has changed, but with, with COVID and everything else. What would you say our position is in comparison to last year? Our ranking went up, or is it the same?
Sorry, in terms of ranking, what do you mean by ranking?
We had like the top mark, it was one of the first comments you made.
Oh, the unmodified opinion. Yeah, so unmodified opinion, we've been giving unmodified opinions in the financial statements for many years here at the financial, so that, at the city. So that hasn't changed. That's basically, you can rely on the numbers. That is not a comment on the health of the organization, that is simply a comment on the financials themselves and that they were properly presented. As far as the health of the city, I would say that the city is in good shape. I commend the city for trying to move that unassigned fund balance up to help cover any unforeseen expenditures and things like that, but other than that, I would say things are in good shape.
Okay, so we have adequate, adequate funds, and we can weather an inflationary storm?
Well, I don't want to go too far. I think, I think because we don't know where inflation would head and all of that, I would say that my communities that I would say are best in class are the ones that have some sort of future-looking plan, more than just one-year budget, so plans that would be three, five, 10 years down the road, and say, here's our capital plan, here's, here are the plans that we know we're going to have in the future. I'd say that that's important. I would say that you're in better shape than most communities as it relates to your unfunded legacy obligations. So that piece I covered in the letter as it relates to pension and OPEB, that you're in a much better funding position than a lot of communities there. So that also helps.
Definitely like that. And as a growing community, both commercially and residential housing units, does that play into it, or is it really just what, what the numbers are?
So yeah, I would refer back to the slide that Stephen presented on the tax, taxable value, and that is, a couple more slides here.
There's a lot of potential to grow.
One more. Yeah, so when you're in a mature community, you don't really have the capacity to grow that taxable base. And so the fact that Celine is still growing, that is a, a good sign for the future, that there is that opportunity to increase that a little more flexibly than you might have in a community that has no, has much fewer opportunities for growth.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member Kamara Sulak. Council member CEO, any questions or comments for our guests or city staff?
No questions. The only comment I would have is thank you very much again for the very thorough job that you've done in not only reviewing the records here, but in making the presentation. We appreciate it.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, Dylan, any questions, comments for our guests?
Thank you. I'll start with the, for the audit. The notes from previous audits have been resolved. Do we have carryovers?
That's a good point, yes. The, the letter, I should have pointed out, the letter does not have those comments that we have in the past, so, so I commend the city on addressing those items. As far as carryovers, you mean additional comments for this year? No, we had no additional comments, other than some minor items that we would have covered in the finance committee meeting.
Fantastic. And then my next question is probably for the city manager, I apologize. So part of our fund balance dip was because we had an infrastructure failure in the Wildwood subdivision. What is our plan should there be another failure? I mean, because that took a significant amount of dollars, which we did not assess to homeowners.
I think in that situation, we'd be looking at either financing, or depending on the nature of it, if it really is a localized issue, special assessments. of it, if it really is a localized issue, special assessments. That particular issue, we've since done supplemental investigation. We certainly put Larry on the spot, he loves that. But I, I think we feel a lot more comfortable with that subdivision than we did, though there's still some, some work to do with our, our storm sewer assessments in general. I think we've talked about this too at this level. One of the things that continues to be a challenge for our general fund is that storm sewers are paid for through general fund dollars instead of having a dedicated enterprise fund like water and wastewater. So really looking at the state to see what they come up with in terms of opportunities for us to identify different means of generating revenue for supporting that system. But certainly if, if that arose again, number one thing we would be looking at is probably trying to find some financing instead of paying cash, so to speak, for the project.
Thank you. And then just as a personal comment that I'll make about our fund balance dipping, significant projects were done utilizing those dollars. There was the Huntington Wood Sidewalk Plan, there was the Rosebud Project, and there was also the School Crosswalk on Woodland. Those were unbudgeted projects that used unassigned fund dollars. So just to clarify where those dollars have gone. Thank you.
Any additional comments?
No, I'm all set.
Mayor Portem Gearbuck, questions, comments for our guests or for city staff?
No real questions. I just wanted to say, we had the opportunity, Ms. Dillon and myself, to meet with our auditors to discuss some concerns and issues. And we had brought about BSNA software, but there were some receivable issues that have been resolved and corrected. We also talked about the Rec Department as an ongoing operation. And then also, we brought the concern regarding the fire department and the extended liabilities that potentially the city is facing as a result of its current operations and administrative approach. And Ms. Dillon had mentioned the issue regarding the unassigned fund balance. I think the one thing that we have going for us, with us right now, is that our new finance director and treasurer will be providing a lot more oversight and review to address ongoing concerns and issues that may be resolved with a new set of eyes. And I know you gentlemen will work with us, including your other individuals, to make sure that we are moving ahead with our changes and implementations. So appreciate all the help you've done this year again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Del Arco, any comments, questions for our guests or for city staff?
Yeah, just quickly, two main questions. As far as your opinion on our unfunded legacy costs with respect to OPEB and pension, is it your opinion that we're above the mark on, on most municipalities as far as the percentage of funding we're maintaining there?
Yeah, yeah, I'd say you're above average in terms of the funding level that you have there.
Okay. And then while we have you here, this may be a little out of order, but I thought I would ask you to clarify some of the issues around the ARPA funding because we're being asked later in the meeting to rescind a resolution and how those funds are to be distributed. And I'm not clear on what the complexities of the audit requirements are.
So that's a big complicated issue with the ARPA, but it is, in terms of what it can be spent on, it is a little, quite a bit simpler than it was originally indicated for. Originally, there were going to be a lot more specifics, but basically at this point, it needs to be spent on governmental services. And of that, it can't be used to fund, for example, legacy costs or pay down debt. There are a few other requirements, but basically you've got a pretty wide availability in terms of what you can spend it on, as the term governmental expenditures hasn't been very well defined.
Okay.
So you've got a pretty wide bucket that you can put that into.
So given that there's some ambiguity there, is the Rec Center reimbursement a qualified cost for, for ARPA dollars?
So if it's, it depends on what you're saying, Rec Center reimbursement. If it's using it to, for example, work on some capital projects there, absolutely. If you're using that to fund wages, things like that, you'd have to look into, do you think that covers as governmental expenditures? I would think, I would lean yes, but...
Lost revenue doesn't sound like one of them.
So lost revenue is the category that you get overall, that the city used to get the ARPA funds. That was basically a very broad category, but then it has to actually be spent on specific expenditures. So if you're reimbursing the Rec Center, that's great, but then what you'd have to do is actually spend that on qualified expenditures. The lost revenue doesn't count as a qualified expenditure on its own.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I very much appreciate it.
Sure.
Anything else, Mr. Del Arco?
That's all, thank you.
Very good. Gentlemen, thank you. Appreciate your time as always. Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to working with you again in the future. We will proceed now to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Moved and submitted.
Moved by CEO to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Camaro Sulek. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. We've come to public hearing, agenda item 22-299, special land use for adult-use marijuana retailer at 7608 East Michigan Avenue. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing, affording our constituents the opportunity to speak to this issue at 7:36 PM.
Moved to open?
Moved by Gearbuck to open. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by CEO. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this issue? You will be limited to three minutes. The record reflect, there is no one in the audience. Clerk Royal, I would defer to you again. You said you had a comment for one of the public hearings. Is it this one or one of the two subsequent?
It is for this one. It is 7685 East Michigan Avenue.
Nope, you got the address wrong.
7608, I'm sorry.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay, it's, it's from Huntington Bank, National Bank. It says, "The Huntington National Bank opposes the application from Alexander Kieswetter of the Woods for a special land use application to allow an adult-use marijuana retailer at 7608 East Michigan Avenue, Saline, Michigan. Additionally, Huntington opposes the transition of any signage advertising the sale of marijuana within the vicinity of the Commons at South Trail, the shopping center. Huntington owns a parcel within the shopping center where it operates a bank. The shopping center located immediately adjacent to the proposed marijuana retailer is subject to a reciprocal easement agreement that specifically prohibits bars, taverns, billiard rooms, adult bookstores, and other uses that are not common to family-type retail shopping centers. Historically, shopping centers have utilized REAs to ensure shopping centers remain family-friendly environments free from the harmful effects of less desirable uses. An adult-use marijuana retailer is a less desirable use like those commonly prohibited under shopping center REAs. Allowing an adult-use marijuana retailer to operate immediately adjacent to the shopping center would frustrate the purpose of the shopping center REA and would detract from the family atmosphere of the shopping center. The potential for increased criminal activity, the presence of intoxicated individuals, and the adult nature of a marijuana retailer may threaten harm to the existing businesses within the shopping center. Additionally, it is common for parcel owners within a retail shopping district to enter into various easements and agreements with neighboring property owners to address ingress and egress, cross-access, snow removal, parking lot, and road maintenance. However, federal anti-money laundering statutes prohibit financial institutions such as Huntington from conducting business with marijuana retailers. Therefore, if a marijuana retailer is permitted to operate it on the parcel adjacent to Huntington's parcel, Huntington would be unable to address these common issues and would be forced to terminate any existing agreements between the parcel owners. This may negatively, negatively impact the flow of traffic between the various parcels within the shopping district and detract from the overall customer experience. For the above stated reasons, Huntington opposes the special land use to allow an adult-use marijuana retailer adjacent to the shopping center." And it's signed, Alomni Christian.
Very good. We appreciate the comments from our friends at Huntington Bank, Saline. One last call for additional comments on this issue. All you need to do is step up to the podium, you'll be limited to three minutes. We welcome your comments.
Yeah, my name is Sherman Manu, reside at Burwick Park, near the Oaks, and I basically agree with what Huntington is stating. My concern is, I just learned of this, is the odors, because I live right next to that land, as well as some of the other concerns that Huntington has addressed, so I would be opposed to that.
Very good. Thank you for your comments. Any additional comments from those in the audience? One last call. Okay, then the chair would be delighted to entertain a motion to close the public hearing at 7:40.
So moved?
Moved by Gearbuck, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Camaro Sulek. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now closed. We proceed to the subsequent motion. Let's begin with a simple motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated November 14th, 2022.
Moved to acknowledge?
Moved by Gearbuck to acknowledge. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon, I'll get you on the next one, Mr. Del Arco. In the absence of our recording secretary, Ms. Ritchie, Mr. Harrington, would you care to comment on this issue?
Absolutely. So this case went before the Planning Commission, actually twice, so it was postponed, first action and then brought back. The reason for postponement was to get advice from legal counsel on a variety of issues, but specifically, what is the city's subjectivity when applying the special land use standards? After consulting carefully with legal counsel, after having reviews from both Carlisle Wortman and Planner Arabak and myself, we found that the project does meet our seven special land use standards using the level of subjectivity that we are allowed to. So to remind counsel, the special land use standards, although allowing for some subjectivity over, you know, what does harmonious mean, what does an economic impact to the city mean, they have to be tied back to an ordinance or some sort of legal rationale for what we can and can't enforce. And in this case, we found that it met all seven standards. Just because it's inevitably going to come up to address the concerns over the Huntington Bank parcel and things like that, those are private agreements that are outside the scope of the city's approval or denial of a specific thing. So just similar with an HOA, it's not our place to step in and tell folks whether they can have offense or not if their HOA prohibits one in a manner such as this too. It's not our place to weigh in on legal matters that are dealt between private properties and covenants that they may or may not share with one another. But I'd be happy to go through the seven criteria. They were all attached to your packet in my report. Not only were they in Carlisle Wortman's report, they were also in my reports of the Planning Commission where I carefully detail each of the seven criteria and how the applicant does meet them and/or what, what the various caveats to that meeting is. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Very good. Are there questions for Mr. Harrington? Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. Have it been established that this property meets the 1,000-foot boundary?
Yes. So from our best estimates, it does indeed meet the 1,000-foot boundary, but they would need a licensed surveyor to officially confirm that before they began construction. That was part of the conditions for the final site plan.
And that's not something that they would have to do prior to moving this process forward to this body?
By every measure, they meet the 1,000-foot buffer, so it, it's more than 1,000 feet by our measurement. So it's not, it's not close enough to instigate us to require that to be something they do before they carry the process forward.
Okay. And then I, okay, I'll stop there, I'll let others go.
Actually, my apologies. Is the petitioner or applicant or applicant's representative present this evening or participating remotely? Does the record reflect they are not? Are there additional questions, comments for city staff? Mr. Del Arco, please, and then Mr. CEO.
Yeah, I'm growing increasingly concerned about the frequency with which there are several members of the Planning Commission absent when these special land use votes come before the body. It seems to be becoming a habit when there's a special land use application, particularly referencing adult use or medical marijuana. I'm hoping that, because this was not approved unanimously by the Planning Commission, I'm hoping that either Mr. Gearbuck or yourself, Mayor Marl, can comment on why there was some no vote, or a no vote on the Planning Commission with respect to this application and what's being done to address the, the absence and the frequency of absences on the Planning Commission, barely meeting quorum.
I can, if I may, I can speak to the absence issue. Mr. Gearbuck would be best equipped to vote, or to articulate the rationale behind the no vote since he was the Planning Commission member who, who cast it. So I'll, I'll start with Mayor Portem Gearbuck.
As I review this, of course, my concern is that this location is less than 250 feet, maybe a little more, from our historical farm museum, which, as you know, has a program which encourages the attendance of our schoolchildren as an educational and a public museum. I feel this is no different than the Depot Museum or any other educational institution in our community that we have established a process, precedent, that we did not want to have this type of facility next to it. Unfortunately, as we learned from a review with the, our legal team, they felt that the harmonious approach was not justifiable in terms of denying this SLU. I disagreed with that, like will continue to disagree with that, and I will vote no on this issue when this comes up in a minute. I believe that we have set a precedent that we have some public facilities at which we need to continue to consider that the placement of these type of facilities, based on public feedback and our citizens' review, should not be located next to these type of museums and so forth. So even if this is passed by the council tonight, whatever, I'm going to be making a recommendation that we modify, as we did previously, to extend either a distance of 500 feet from any of our public parks or our museums, that these type of facilities not be allowed in the future. As for that, the original, first time it came up before planning, there was a great discussion about that, and the individuals postponed it because they felt that, they too felt strongly about this issue. But when it came back the second time, as you stated, a number of members were not present, and then the others felt that they were going to follow the legal precedent. I've discussed this with our city manager, she feels that, and with our community developer, there are things where they feel that we may not want to necessarily pursue a legal approach, and I feel that this type of a situation is one, that's the reason why we have legal, we have legal authority, and yes, they may provide us with information, but sometimes a council needs to have a little more voice in what that legal review is.
Thank you for that, Mayor Portem Gearbuck. Mr. Del Arco, in, in regards to absences, let me, let me state...
Mr. Marl, sorry to interrupt you. I believe the applicant actually is in attendance via Zoom. Is that correct?
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, very good. Let me, let me finish my comment, and then I'll defer to you if you'd like to make a brief comment for the public record. So in regards to the issue of absences on boards and commissions, I would state this broadly, not just specific to our Planning Commission, but attendance is, is a key priority, and if members cannot regularly attend or participate in any boards and commissions, then they need to relinquish themselves of, of that responsibility. I will say, generally speaking, I think attendance is, is not a particular problem at the Planning Commission level. I think the meeting in which this issue was considered was back in November, if I recall. I think it was our first meeting in November.
It was a special meeting, if I remember, Mr. Harrington.
It was the November 9th meeting, so November 16th was just the other one.
Our first meeting in November. I believe there were four absences. I know that Commissioner Heft is the owner of Heft Promotions, which puts on the Fall Craft Show. The Fall Craft Show was that Saturday, so that was the reason for her conflict. I believe for business, both Mr. Beardsley and Mr. Carroll were, were out of town. So I'm not, not justifying their absences, but providing some context. And again, I, I would refer back to a previous statement, which is, I don't think that, generally speaking, absences is, is an issue at the, at the Planning Commission level. But I agree, we ought to be emphasizing participation and encouraging all of our boards and commissioners, regardless of what entity they serve on, to attend as frequently as they are able. With that, I would turn it over to the applicant if he would like to make a few brief remarks for the public record.
Sure. My name's Alexander Kieswetter, I'm the applicant. I just wanted to say that we did follow, you know, all, all parts of the ordinance when choosing this location. As far as the smell, it's, that's, we, we have no problem with any type of, like, you know, smell complaints at other locations. It's really, really more of a cultivation side of the business that's really causes the smell. You know, we have, we have industrial HVAC systems in our building, and it doesn't, there really isn't like an outside smell beyond the store. After the, after the, the Planning Committee meeting, the last one, we were forced to close on the property, so I do hope we are approved here. I don't, you know, we work with every city we're with, we are in, if you have anything you want us to do, we happy to do it. Just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to also respond to the gentleman who spoke during the public hearing. This proposed property is behind Rentschler Farm, adjacent to Tractor Supply. So it is within the proximity of your neighborhood and your, your home, but not particularly close, although I would note there are some proposed dispensaries within closer proximity to, to your home. And if you'd like to follow up with either my office or the clerk's office, we can provide you information on that so that you can participate in any future meetings in which those issues are considered. Are there additional questions again for staff, Mr. Harrington, the applicant, or, or I guess the city manager? Mr. CEO, I'm going to defer back to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wasn't entirely clear about the Huntington Bank's objection. This property is now within their HOA, is it?
So the, the issue here is that they all share sage... So the, the issue here is that they all share Sage Court, which is a private road, and there are shared signage, too, as a result. So I'm not exactly sure what the nature of those shared agreements are. If the applicant can speak to whatever shared sign agreement is, or perhaps provide more context on the Huntington Bank comment that was received, that would, that would probably be the best. But yes, because they're Tractor Supply and the shopping center, and I believe Huntington Bank all have some sort of shared agreement with Sage Court, as well as the monument sign. Outside of those, I think that that's where the issue is coming in the contention here.
I see. And you say that planning does not take a position of having to enforce any of the HOA requirements?
Right. Yeah, it would, it would be, we don't enforce the HOA for the HOA. They're deed restrictions. They have nothing to do with the city. You know, there are some, you know, federal and state regulations about what can go into a deed restriction, but there's nothing that the city does to monitor those or enforce those, more often than not.
Would the applicant like to address, Your Honor, that question?
If you'd like him to respond, he is more than welcome to do so.
I'm sorry, on the signage part?
Well, have you heard any objection from Huntington Bank about the shared signage agreement?
I haven't heard it personally, or, no, I've not. That was the first I've heard of it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any additional questions from the dais? Back to Councilmember Dillon.
Thank you. I do have a concern similar to Mr. Girba about the proximity of this property to the Rentschler Farm property. I do view that farm property as a community asset similar to the way that we look at the one-room schoolhouse, although that is on school property and a school-owned asset. They do serve similar purposes in that they are for educational purposes, specifically geared towards younger children. So I, I do have conflicting thoughts about this. I understand Mr. Harrington's approach to this as, but at the same time, I do think that council should draw the line as to, for a special land use, that it is not harmonious in that it is too close to a, to a learning environment.
If I could expand on what we meant by harmonious between Carlisle Wortman and myself. So harmonious would be, did you say something in your future land use plan that would state that this type of business establishment is not harmonious in this location? So, for example, if we had this slated as future residential or future industrial, that would be an example of where we're lacking that harmony. If you looked at the zoning of the property, are they asking to be rezoned? Is it, is it a substantial ask? But in this case, it's zoned SPA 1. It's meant for commercial purposes. So we didn't see a lack of harmony with that. And then, you know, looking further out into our standards with traffic and parking, we thought that, oh, those were met. So by our own ordinances, it is harmonious. And I understand, you know, where you're, where both of you and Mr. Girba are coming from, that it's not harmonious in that sense, but per our own ordinances, it is in fact, or it is, in our opinion, harmonious. So that's our nuanced-ish take of it.
Any additional questions? Then we have a motion on the floor simply to acknowledge receipt of the November 14th, 2022 memo from Recording Secretary, the Planning Commission's Recording Secretary, Katrina Ritchie. It's been moved by Girba, seconded by Dillon. All those in favor of acknowledging signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve, approve with conditions, not to approve, or any subsequent or additional motion that is appropriately worded. And please note the four conditions as enumerated on tonight's agenda.
I would move to approve with conditions.
Move by-
The four conditions stated.
Move by Seo to approve with conditions, the four that are enumerated on the agenda. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Kamira Sulek. Is there any additional discussion? Mr. Seo?
I guess I understand the comments of both of my colleagues on council about their feeling that the Rentschler Farm is an educational, sort of an opportunity, and is veiled such through our schools. But I'm also persuaded by the attorney's opinion that we can't stretch the fact that, you know, even though the school kids go there, that it's really not an educational function that occurs there. It's not an educational institution, I guess. So in that regard, I guess I'm persuaded that they do meet all the conditions as expressed currently in our ordinances. And I'd be more than happy to, to amend those ordinances for the future date to include parks and, and both the museums in our community. But at this point in time, I feel that this gentleman has presented a suitable application, and I intend to vote in favor of him.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? I'd make two points. I, I agree with, with Mr. Seo, Councilmember Seo, and the thoughts previously expressed by our colleague, Mr. Girba, would be amenable to modifying and amending, in an expeditious manner, the ordinance to present, prevent these types of mishaps or issues from occurring in the future. Mr. Harrington, for not only council's benefit, but more for the public's benefit, these applications have to go through a special land use. In addition to that, they have to receive preliminary and final site plan for planning before the project can move forward and pull building permits. Can you confirm for the public record, this petitioner, if the special land use is approved this evening, still has to file and get approval from the Planning Commission for a final site plan? Is that correct?
That is correct. So if they get approval tonight, they would then have to continue on to the final site plan process. The preliminary site plan process is more of a sketch of the area, and by, I mean, it's a very detailed sketch of all sketches, but it's more of a sketch, it's more of a concept, versus the final site plan has deeper engineering reviews, how they're hooking to utilities, more information on grading and signages, more of a detailed layout of the floor plan, et cetera. So it's a very comprehensive process for the final site plan.
And did I hear you correctly? The applicant has not filed yet for final site plan?
That is correct.
Okay. Very good. Any additional comments from the dais? Mr. Girba, then I'll jump to Councilmember Kamira Sulek.
Just clarification on, this doesn't mean or prohibit anything from Huntington Bank pursuing any kind of legal ramifications or lawsuit against this individual, because I think we have a similar situation happening in another situation where there is a dispute between the landlord and a former tenant?
Could you rephrase that question? I'm sorry.
I guess the question, just a question is that we have a similar situation, I thought, in another location where the landlord is having a dispute with the tenant?
I, I believe that was resolved privately and similarly. So I have no reason, they're pulling building permits for that specific site right now. So I have no reason to believe that that, that's going to be drawn out, drawn out, or-
So Huntington Woods approached on it. If they don't agree with this, they would file their own lawsuit?
Right. And I will add that if Huntington Woods, for whatever reason, decided to rescind-
Not Huntington Bank.
Sorry, Huntington Bank. I apologize. Huntington Bank-
I did, too.
So if Huntington Bank did decide to rescind any sort of shared access or parking agreement, or even remove signage, it would potentially result in a reevaluation of the site plan and of the special land use of itself, because it fundamentally changes the aspect of the site. So if they did remove, or if they lost access drive, it would all end up being an issue here. So, but I would strongly encourage the applicant to talk to Huntington Bank sooner rather than later, given the nature of the comment that they gave this evening.
Anything else, Mr. Girba?
Nope.
Then I'll jump to Mr. Kamira Sulek before we, before I call for the vote.
Yeah, just a clarification. So Tractor Supply, obviously, is immediately next door and, and the parking lot. Is the dispensary going to have its own, it's going to have its own parking on-site, or is it-
Yes.
-using any, okay. So there is a buffer between Rentschler Farm and the dispensary. I understand the other, the other, the other concerns. At first, I thought it was a little more direct, but as I see now, it is, it is a little bit of distance away.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Then we proceed to vote. We have a motion on the floor moved by Seo, seconded by Kamira Sulek, to approve with the four enumerated conditions as outlined on tonight's agenda. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That was three to three, so the motion does not pass. It would be my preference, then, to have a motion to postpone consideration until our next regular meeting, which would be on the 19th. Is there a motion to do that?
Might I suggest that we plan on having the attorney present, then, for that meeting?
Certainly. Is there a motion to postpone?
Motion to postpone.
To a date certain of December 19th?
December 19th.
Thank you. Who is the second on that?
I'll second.
Seo, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, go ahead.
I do have a question. Can we postpone on a, on a motion that's already, did it fail because of the tie?
It didn't fail. It just did not pass.
I see.
You have to have a majority vote to either pass something or to defeat it.
Okay.
This is a split three to three.
Okay, so it's, it's appropriate to postpone then. Okay.
Yes.
Yes, I would make the motion.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to postpone, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion is postponed as a, it will appear as an unfinished business item on December the 19th. Thank you all. We move on to our second public hearing, which is 22-300, special land use for adult-use marijuana retailer at 751 West Michigan Ave. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing, affording the public the opportunity to speak to this issue at 8:01 PM.
Mayor, point of order or point of correction?
Yep.
The information that's attached has a different address that's on our, our agenda that's electronic. It says 660 East Michigan Avenue. What are we discussing tonight? 751? 660?
I believe it's 751 because the petitioner is present.
I thought we discussed this at the last meeting, 751.
So you discussed this, oh, you discussed 660 at the last meeting. So 751 is correct for this evening.
Okay. So as enumerated on the agenda is correct. Okay. Would you like to move, then, to open the public hearing at 8:01, Mr. Girba?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Seo. All those in favor of opening the public hearing at 8:01, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak this evening? You will be limited to three minutes.
Just making sure, we're talking about the old Mickey's right now?
We are.
Yes.
Okay. They've been doing construction for a while, and in the last Planning Commission meeting, there was numerous conditions put on them. Since that meeting, Commissioner Young asked, as a condition, to make sure they put up a fence around the property while they're doing construction. No fence has been put up yet. Another condition that we discussed was them finishing the sidewalk. They said a week. It took about a month. So the, the people that lived on that side of town, where I live, we didn't have a sidewalk for nearly a month. They blocked the road. They blocked the sidewalk. They have not been harmonious with anybody on that side of the, the community at all. They finally removed the sign, which was one of the conditions, but that, it's just not safe for people there if they don't put up a fence around it. I strongly encourage you tonight not to approve it. They're not meeting conditions. They're not being harmonious with the community members around there. Our children are at risk, and we need to do something about this, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Are there any additional citizen comments on this particular agenda item? Then I would defer to the city clerk. I believe we did not receive any written comments on this, this matter, but I'd provide you the opportunity to read them if we did. You're muted. I'm going to take that as a no. One last opportu, go ahead.
I do not have any comments.
Very good. Thank you. One last opportunity for those in the audience to comment. Then the chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing at 8:03. Moved by Girba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. All those in favor of closing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now closed. We'll start again with a motion simply to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated November the 15th, 2022, from Recording Secretary Ritchie. Moved by Girba to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. Mr. Harrington, if you'd like to comment on this issue, and also on the conditions that were placed on this development when Planning Commission last considered it, whether those have all been met, or if they're in the process of being met. And then I do believe the petitioner or his representative is present this evening. I will defer to him for some brief comments before we open up from the dais.
I'll let the applicant speak to the fencing issue. I believe there was a fence up at one point when I drove by recently. I can't speak to whether it's still up. I have not been out there this week. As for the conditions, they're conditions for the site as a whole, meaning they have until they complete the project to meet all of those conditions. Sometimes things like removing a sign takes longer than repaving the driveway. It's kind of an ebb and flow. So, you know, I apologize, the conditions aren't all being met instantly, but they do have, per our own rules and per the standards of our site plan, until the completion of the site to bring all those into conformity. In addition, this was another item we talked heavily about at the Planning Commission. It has now received the, the medical SLU. It's received final site plan approval for medical, and once they receive, if they receive approval tonight for this special land use, they can go on for final site plan for adult use. So with all that being said, we once again found that it met the seven standards of our special land use, and it was approved, I believe unanimously, at the Planning Commission.
Very good. Actually, my apologies. Mr. Delarco did me a favor on the last motion. He called upon Mr. Girba to comment, but I did not follow my normal protocols. Mr. Girba is the Planning Commission representative from City Council. Do you care to comment on this issue at all?
It went through clear. There wasn't any exceptions to this. I mean, we did have Mr. Troika do an abstention on it, because I believe he represents the applicant. But other than that, there were no other concerns at that point.
Very good. And Sean, I believe you are present. If you'd like to comment briefly on this matter for the public's benefit, and if, I'm sure you heard the public comments about complying with previous motions offered by the Planning Commission, if you could also make reference to that in, in terms of what you and your partners are doing to be in full compliance with, with city-approved standards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council. I believe that a temporary fence was put up, but I cannot speak to that. That's an issue I have not spoken to the development team about. But what I will say is that the, the site plan, disregarding the exterior of the building, is about 98% complete. The arborvitus and the landscaping has been put up. The asphalt and the concrete has been laid. So it's pretty complete. It looks very nice at this point. I don't know if you guys necessarily want a fence put up again at this point, but the arborvitus are up, the walkways are safe to walk on, and the landscaping is up. I believe the site looks very nice at this point, and we're continuing to work on it to finalize it, of course.
On the matter of fencing, why don't we have Mr. Harrington follow up with you tomorrow or, or Wednesday to see if that's necessary? If staff deemed that appropriate, we would expect that you move expeditiously to, to install a temporary fence, but we'll leave that to the judgment of him and his colleagues in the, the Community Development Department. If you want to continue, Sean, by making a few brief comments about this project, primarily for the public's benefit, that would be great.
Sure. Just to inform the public, our anticipated opening date is within the next 60 days or so, if all permits go smoothly and, and construction goes smoothly. We're very excited to be a partner with Celine. The name, the, the doing business as name, if people are not aware, is Rush, Rush Cannabis. Rush is operating in Hazel Park currently. This will be a second location for Rush, and we're excited to be a partner with Celine. And if any of the council members have any questions, I'm all ears, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. We have a motion on the floor simply to acknowledge receipt. Are there questions from my council colleagues, either for staff liaison, Harrington, or the petitioner? Mr. Kamira Sulek?
Yes, regarding the, the sidewalk closure. How long did, how long was it, was it closed? And what factors were, account for the delay?
I could not tell you the exact timeline on how long it was closed. I guesstimate two to three weeks, and I know that there was a delay partially because of MDOT issues and MDOT approvals for certain things that they were doing. But what I can tell you is the sidewalk is up. It's functional. The landscaping's been laid, so the public can use it. It's safe, and it's brand new.
Okay. I'd just like to stress, as I'm sure, the importance to all of us of public safety, and especially when it comes to our, to our children, to have a, a safe sidewalk, and especially with all the curb cuts that are, that are along there.
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
Very good. Additional questions? Councilmember Dillon?
Thank you. It's probably from Mr. Harrington. I do appreciate, I do drive by your facility numerous times a day. I do appreciate all the landscaping. I did see them laying sod and planting trees, and it does look miraculously different than it did just a week ago. My only question was that the sidewalk, does it require an ADA ramp on the side leading into the Radio Shack parking lot?
I, I don't know the answer off the top of my head to that question, but the building plans have been reviewed and reviewed again and again, because there have been some minor tweaks to aspects of the building plan itself by our consultant at CES, and that is absolutely something that they're looking for. The plan is also reviewed by OHM, who's our engineering advisor. That's also something they're looking for, and by Carlisle Wortman, which is also. So my answer would be, I'm sure they're in compliance, given that it's had three independent reviews, but I can look more into that.
I appreciate it. It's just, as Mr. Kamira Sulek had said, the, the property next door to it has three curb cuts, and so there's a tremendous amount of traffic going in and out. And it would just be nice to make sure that pedestrians realize that they were transitioning from a sidewalk to a driveway, back to a sidewalk to a driveway, you know, that sort of thing, and just understanding where those are so that they're a little bit more aware of their surroundings, because there are a lot of people, just the way in which the roadway is, that sort of cut into those parking- Because there are a lot of people, just the way in which the roadway is, that sort of cut into those parking lots very quickly, and just making sure pedestrians understand that, you know, there is a change there.
Any additional questions, comments from the dais? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just to tack on to Ms. Dylan, she'd mentioned that because MDOT apparently has been putting the handicap-type ramps with the dots or whatever it is when they just redid Michigan Avenue to the east, so this might be an MDOT thing you want to, you want to.
I believe Mr. Mansour can speak to that as well, but MDOT has reviewed and approved this plan. They in fact had MDOT permits to close aspects of the road, so I'm sure that MDOT is also very keenly aware about the exact nature of what they're doing at that property.
Yeah, would the applicant care to comment to that point?
Just to restate that that is correct, that MDOT did review these plans, approved them, and we did not proceed until they did.
Very good. There's nothing further from the dais. There is a motion on the floor moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Dylan, to acknowledge receipt of the memo from November the 15th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to approve, approve with conditions, or not to approve, or any additional motion that's appropriately rewarded?
Move to approve with conditions.
Number, and there are three of those on the agenda. That's been moved by Gearbaugh to approve with the three conditions as outlined on the agenda. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Delarco. Is there any additional discussion? There is none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Sean, thank you very much. We appreciate your time this evening.
Have a good evening.
We move on to our last public hearing, which is agenda item 22-301, special land use for Planet Fitness Gym at 946 East Michigan Ave. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing at, I'm gonna say, 8:13, affording our constituents an opportunity to speak to this issue.
Move to open.
Moved by CO to open, and I'll let Dylan be the second. All those in favor of opening the public hearing at 8:13, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this issue? And Clerk Royal, I assume we received no written communiques in advance of tonight's meeting?
No, sir.
Okay. One last call. Anybody like to speak to a proposed Planet Fitness Gym at 946 East Michigan Ave? That is their motion to close the public hearing at 8:14. Moved by Gearbaugh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by CO. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now closed. We move on to the third and final motion, which is a motion to acknowledge the memo dated November 15th, 2022, from Recording Secretary Ritchie, and to approve with conditions or not to approve the special land use for 946 East Michigan Avenue for a gym fitness center with the following conditions as outlined on the agenda, and there are three of them.
I'll move to acknowledge.
You want to start with just a motion to acknowledge? Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Kamero Sulek. Mr. Harrington, in Recording Secretary Ritchie's absence, do you care to make some brief comments for the public's benefit?
Absolutely. This is the former site of the Powerhouse Gym that used to be in Celine, as well as Old Ace Hardware. They're combining the two suites to be one larger gym. Really, the only concerns that staff had surrounded proposed tanning and hydro massage service and whether or not that would classify as an additional special land use, but upon learning more from the applicant, no hands are being placed on bodies. It's a machine. It's like a massage chair or like a fancy water tank thing, so they will not be needing another special land use for that. But the site was already set up for the correct amount of utilities. There's adequate parking on the site, there's adequate access to it, so staff has no concerns and found that it not only met all the conditions of the special land use for gym fitness clubs, but in addition, it was, there was a combined site plan, so they received final site plan approval as well.
Very good. Is the petitioner applicant here? Yes. Would you like to come forward and make some brief comments for council's benefit as well as the public? We welcome you here this evening, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you for having us, City Council. Yeah, we just want to finalize this. We've already begun construction. We've been working with Mr. Harrington on this for some time, and we're just excited to become part of the community and open up.
And assuming the motion passes this evening, your target date for opening is late January, early February?
End of January.
Very good. Excellent. Mr. Gearbaugh is the Planning Commission rep. You may wish to comment, but I believe you also have a question.
Yeah, there was no real concerns on this. From my perspective, though, I have, I did this past week, visit the shopping center, and there appears to be a number of parking lots, lights that are out, the pedestrian lights that are along the shopping center out. Considering that this will allow or will increase the number of cars and visitors to that shopping center, I will be putting additional condition on this, that those items be repaired by, and I know we disagree slightly on this, but I think that should be a requirement that the center repair those items.
I've already asked our code enforcement officer to take a look at the site as well, because the lighting itself is a condition of all the site plans that have been submitted at this site, so.
Excellent.
And that's something we'll address with the landlord as well. He was supposed to make it here tonight, but he tested positive for COVID, so we'll make sure that we, we push to make sure all of our members are safe with parking lot lights, so.
And we know, I just happened to notice that. We've been having significant problems with DTE and managing our own streetlights, so whatever we can do to keep it safe and above board.
The lighting for your, for the safety of your clients and customers is an important issue. Remind us of what the hours of operation would be.
We are a 24/7 location.
patrons using it late in the evening, where it's dark is a guarantee. Okay, excellent. Very good. Thank you. You can actually hang tight in the event that there are questions from council that are best addressed by yourself. Mr. Delarco.
My only question is for Mr. Harrington. I'm wondering why we need special land use application, given that there was a gym at this location prior to them being there.
Right, so it's actually a caveat in the special land use too. So I believe I sent an email to council, or maybe it was just the Planning Commission a while ago. So if they had purchased the underlying LLC, the original person, person, the original item LLC business that had applied for a special land use and been granted it, and they were the full owner of that, then they would not need to, only if they had expanded their floor area. In this instance, they don't own the underlying LLC, so they are new applicant. It was not a continuous gym between Powerhouse to Planet Fitness. It was vacant for a period of time, and they expanded the floor area, which then requires re-review. So there's a mini storage proposal as well coming forward. Very similar instance, they're expanding floor area, therefore they need an additional special land use approval.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any additional questions from the dais? Thank you. Appreciate your time this evening. We have a motion on the floor simply to acknowledge receipt of the memo from November the 15th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Mr. Gearbaugh, did you want to offer a motion to approve with an amendment?
Yeah, I'll move to approve with conditions, adding as number four, all lighting, Mr. Harrington, may help me on this. All lighting meet our site plan requirements?
Yeah, we could say that lighting meets the site plan requ, well, I guess it's part of the site plans too, that the lighting be present. So it's already a baked-in condition, but yes, we could add another condition.
Basically, all lighting to be restored on parcel.
Yes.
Okay. Clerk Royal, did you get that language?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Okay, there's a motion properly made by Mayor Potem Gearbaugh to approve with four conditions, the three that are outlined, and then one pertaining to lighting. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Dylan. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Look forward to working with you. We move on to unfinished business item 22-288, First Amendment to purchase, for purchase agreement for Lot 20A. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from City Manager Otul, to approve or not to approve the First Amendment to purchase agreement with Visio Clara.
Move to acknowledge.
Moved by Dylan to acknowledge. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamero Sulek. City Manager Otul, do you care to make a brief comment?
Certainly. So this is a pretty simple extension agreement. The applicant or the potential purchaser would be able to extend by an additional 30 days, contingent upon them making a non-refundable deposit of $10,000 for each exercise of that right.
Very good. The questions for the city manager? Councilmember Dylan?
Thank you. So remind me, how many extensions are they permitted?
They are permitted up to three.
Okay.
So that would take them to March, mid-March.
Okay. And just for clarification, have they filed for their marijuana applications?
Yes.
So then, is it fair that they're sort of holding a spot that could have gone to someone else? Because now they've, they have a space, and now we've got to circle around them because... Is there anybody that's being blocked out because we're waiting on them to decide on the property?
Given the updated ordinance of a thousand-foot buffer parcel to parcel, and I guess peddling the previous case, the one that was postponed tonight, if that one wasn't postponed, and the other one in that general vicinity doesn't get approved. So the effective answer is no, they're not holding a spot because they're buffered out from the east by the school district boundary, and they're buffered out by the west by two other dispensaries. So I don't believe that they're technically holding a spot by any stretch of the imagination, but that is one way you could look at it.
I would also say their relative timeline seems consistent with the other applicants we've been dealing with. So I mean, it has taken several months for Planning Commission to work through the backlog of marijuana applicants that we received.
Thank you very much.
Any additional questions from the dais? Mr. Delarco.
I just want a refresher for my own edification. I do believe that when we approved this land use, that it was predicated on the faith that that backlot would be developed, and some of the things they're citing here is that there's some soil conditions and some erosion problems that would need to be addressed and fortified before they could build on it. Did we have a clause in the purchase agreement that that land would come back to us in the event that it's not developed?
Correct, yeah. So the major, the major reason for the potential delay on this is that they're still doing additional, I guess, due diligence on those wetlands and what it would mean for the obligation that they have to develop the back parcel. We've been working to identify whether perhaps there should be a different layout for those parcels, and then just split them now, removing that condition, or move forward with the purchase agreement as it stands. But really, they need more time to figure out what the best fit is gonna be.
Okay, I just wanted to remind myself the terms of the purchase agreement. I appreciate it.
Any additional comments? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just remind council that I did share with the entire council an article that was in the Detroit Free Press that talked about Loom and their business approach and what potentially they're looking at, potentially raising a concern of whether this will move forward or not. So I think if you need a little more background, that article included it. Thank you.
If there's nothing further, we do have a motion on the floor moved by Dylan, seconded by Kamero Sulek to acknowledge. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to approve or not to approve the First Amendment to the purchase agreement?
Move to approve.
Moved by CO to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamero Sulek. Any additional discussion? There is none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 22-304, 123 net fiber agreement. This is a follow-up from the presentation at our last council meeting. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Network Administrator Shonk, to approve or not to approve the 123.net fiber agreement.
Move to acknowledge memo.
Moved by Gearbaugh to simply acknowledge the memo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dylan. Mr. Shonk, we went over this at nauseam two weeks ago, but do you care to make a brief comment for the public's benefit?
Sure. So this agreement would be for 123net, a local telecom company, to contract with the city to build out a private fiber network connecting all municipal buildings together on a private, non-internet-based network. So it would be a 10-year commitment. That cost includes the build-out, which is the significant financial kind of ramifications. So yeah, I think we talked, like you said, we talked about it two weeks ago. I think that was kind of the gist of it.
Very good. Questions for Mr. Shonk? Mayor Potem Gearbaugh?
As our city manager knows, and Mr. Shonk, I had, in part of our risk management, Mitch Rhodes, provided me with some additional information because I asked him to look at this proposal, and I've shared it with both, both individuals. Would like to have Mr. Shonk respond back to those questions, if you could, or those statements.
Sure. Yeah, so the first question referred to the service-level agreement. So basically, that means if anything happened to the network, if it went down, what is 123net's responsibility to get it back online? So 123net provided that initially. I just didn't pass it out, so I apologize for that. So their best time effort is an eight-hour repair. So the advantage of 123net is they don't put anything generally on any poles. Everything's buried, so it really prevents, you know, weather issues, you know, a squirrel chewing through a line, something like that. So like you said, eight hours is their target. After 12 hours, though, if it's still down, that triggers the target time to repair in the contract. So at that point, per location, it would be a $900 per hour outage fee to us. So if any, any building goes down, and it would depend on its situationally, so one building, per building, it would be $900 an hour per the outage. So, and at that time, if it was out longer, we could use a cellular-based system to get back online temporarily, at least till, till that repair was done. That makes sense.
There are a couple other items on there, but...
Yeah, so with, the advantage of the 123net fiber is it really, so 123net will physically install the locations, they'll run the fiber, they'll manage it, so if anything happens to it, they'll service it. However, it's really our network in a lot of ways. So we dictate the speed, we dictate what we use on it. There's no independent third party. It's all us. It's first party. We can do pretty much whatever we want because it's not on the internet. It's a private network just connecting our buildings. So not many offer that, especially at a 10-year term. So the price is high, but it's really paying for the build-out. So for them to physically bore to maintain that network, that's what that, that cost is incurring. So at the end of this agreement, that cost will drop because, you know, that build-out cost will have been paid off at that time. So, and then the speed of it, like I said, so to grow over time, so during that 10-year period, if we want to start at a certain level, we can grow as much as we want. Fiber's very flexible for that, so as the city's data needs increase, we can just build it out. We don't have to contact 123net. As long as the network's up, we can do whatever we want with it. So an example would be, you know, currently at our outlying buildings, we don't allow, because of bandwidth constraints, like our in-car video system for our police department. So with the new system, it's entirely cloud-based through Axon, so that would be an advantage. So if a vehicle was near DPW, if it was near another building, we could all upload that, which we currently don't do. And those kind of growth initiatives. So another one is hardening the building security at each location. We want to add cameras. We can add 4K cameras. We don't have to worry about bandwidth constraints because there won't be one. We can set whatever speeds we want and utilize it. So Comcast does offer similar products. We've used a litany of them in the past. We use some of them right now currently, and they're not up to our speed. So cost-wise, 123net definitely is not the least expensive option. There are. We're using a lesser expensive option right now, but it's just not, you know, filling that, that need. So, you know, since, since COVID, offsetting employees, everything, our bandwidth needs have totally changed. So Teams meetings weren't really a thing prior to 2020. Now we're Teams-ing constantly. So there's just a constant need of increased bandwidth, and I don't see that slowing down anytime soon.
So now the aspects that arose, you feel are a condition or a concern for us at this point in time?
No, I think this is really the end game of a network. I mean, this is not uncommon. So Pittsfield Township has their own private network, Washtenaw County has their own private network. This is kind of, they said this is the goal, and obviously we won't own it 123net well, but to have that ability to set our own speeds, to manage it entirely, I think is a huge advantage that's hard to get from other providers, especially at this.
And at the end of 10 years, it's our, it's our network, and then, but we just would renew a contract with them.
Correct, yeah, that would be renegotiated with them, but like you said, the cost is the build-out, so them to physically go out and then maintain that network. So, you know, like I said, if somebody put a backhoe through it, they would come out, they do it all. That's included in this agreement, so.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for city staff, specifically our IT manager? Ms. Dylan?
Thank you. Sir Shonk, is there an opportunity to add phone service to this?
We could look at that. So we upgraded our phone system to an entire VoIP system, started 2020, so that's a five-year contract, basically. So once that's done, then absolutely we should look at other options and see, you know, see if that still makes sense financially, feature set-wise to do that. So 123net does offer their own service, and our current system is actually housed in their network rack in Southfield. So we're not officially using them, but we're using the rack space over there, so.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Then we have a motion on the floor moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Dylan, to acknowledge receipt. Is there, all those in favor, say aye. Excuse me?
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to approve or not to approve the 123.net fiber agreement?
Move to approve.
Moved by Gearbaugh to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by CO. Any additional discussion? Mr. Shonk, thank you very much. Appreciate your work on this. All those in favor of the motion to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 22-312, a school resource officer agreement. I suspect this will develop, or this will generate a little bit of question, of Q and A. So let's start with a motion to simply acknowledge receipt of the memo from Police Chief Marlene Radzik. Moved by Gearbaugh to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by CO. Chief Radzik, the floor is yours, and I believe we also have a guest from Celine Area School, Assistant Superintendent Kurt Ellis. Kurt, we appreciate you being here this evening. You may want to come forward as well because there's questions that are best addressed, maybe best addressed by you. The floor is yours.
So you received the proposal in your agenda packets. This position's already been budgeted for. The school will not be ready to move forward until July of 2023, and I want to see which way this is going because I think it's important to get the right person in that position, and this way we would have time to get a committee together. I'd like to include the Celine Area Schools, somebody from DEI, and then the police department to conduct interviews and select an SRO and be able to send them to the NASRO training prior to them taking that position in the schools.
If there's any questions, I think we'll start down with, or any comments, city manager, any additional? Mr. Kamero Sulek?
I like the, I like the idea. We're being proactive with this, and I'd be interested in sitting in on that committee.
Thank you.
Mr. Seal?
Thank you. Would this person be shared among all the schools in the city? How would this, how is this envisioned to work?
I envision it to work. They will be at the elementary school and the middle school, but there will be times where perhaps there's events at the high school where we would partner with... where perhaps there's events at the high school where we would partner with Pittsfield Township, just perhaps on, you know, special event or a football game or something because, you know, even the middle school students are going to be attending those functions.
Okay.
I think Liberty School is an area of need with our alternative high school there, as well as the middle school, is where I think we would intend a lot of the time to be spent. But certainly, we missed that presence at the elementary schools as well from an educational standpoint.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. I had an opportunity to speak with the chief about a couple of my questions, but just for the rest of council's benefit, I, when reading the agreement, there's no mention of traditional classroom programming like we've done in the past. There was DARE teams and such. It seems like this is just a security guard in that regard. So, can you explain what you envision for this right now?
Yeah, I think both parties absolutely anticipate more of that traditional classroom stuff. We just don't have that necessarily spelled out in the agreement. I think that proactive policing, that ability for officers to create a presence with our students at a young age so that they can become comfortable with and develop relationships with is really important to us. Certainly, there is the security side of things, and I know even when we talked about sidewalks here tonight, you know, keeping our children safe is important. And so, from that standpoint, I think that we'd have a lot of asset built in by having this SRO back in Saline, but there's no question that that educational element is still a big part of our plans.
And where does the school's position on this? Has the school board voted on this? What is their commitment financially, timeframe-wise? Because we've done this before, and we sort of got rolled out, and then we realized you didn't have the dollars, we didn't have the manpower, and it wasn't really, there was a lot of effort put in, and it sort of fell apart.
Yeah, I think a couple of things. Number one, the reason that we're doing this as early as we are is to address that manpower thing. The difficulties that the police department are having with regard to staffing are the same difficulties we're having finding teachers and pair educators. So, we want to make sure that we do it, and we do it right. From a budget standpoint, we have not yet begun the budget process for next year. We added this this early so that we could make sure it's a part of those discussions from the get-go and from the start. And I think that from a financial standpoint, we're in a position today that is much, much healthier than we were three years ago for a variety of different reasons. I can tell you that we have remained committed to having that SRO in Pittsfield with the Pittsfield Police Department. That program has been very, very successful for us, and we want to continue to expand that here in Saline.
In Saline, we've talked about having this become a rotating position, which traditionally, that's not what it's been in Pittsfield. So, do you see a benefit as to one style over the other?
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, it boils down to having the right person in place. I know that in previous school districts I've worked in, it was part of the promotional process in the police department to have a time at the school to get to know students in the community in a larger sense, and there was certainly benefit from that. I think when I first started in Saline 11 years ago, 12 years ago, the model there was that people were getting that job from Pittsfield at the end of their career, and that had a different dynamic to it. And so, I don't know that there's a lot of benefit either way. I think you can get stagnant in a role if you're there for a long, long time, but regardless of whether it's a rotation or somebody that stays for a long time, the key is to have the right person.
Absolutely. And then, I think my last course of questions was more for the chief, which is understanding the city's staffing needs right now. We are down officers. We are looking at retirements coming about, and so, we have our own backfill that we're going to have to do in creating our next generation of police force. So, I'm not sure how this fits in for us of, are we going to take a current officer and cycle them out? Are we going to bring in a new officer to use? Are we just going to keep rotating people through? What I don't want to see is that we've invested a great deal of time, effort, and dollars into some of our officers right now to start learning our community, to start building that relationship with our residents, and then to all of a sudden say, hey, we're going to pull you out for three years. I don't think that's fair to our residents at this point, and so, I really would like to see that balance of what this is going to look like.
Well, even in the collective bargaining agreement for a position like this, you really can only have somebody dedicated for three years. It can be extended for arguments such as, you know, the training, the cost that goes into training an SRO. But I think it's important to get the right person in there, and I'm a little hesitant to send a brand-new officer in there because they still haven't learned. I mean, in my past career, when we put a younger officer in there, they didn't understand the difference between what they should be doing as far as, they're not there to enforce school rules, and it got a little sketchy there for a little bit. But I think somebody with experience that's been, you know, through the training program. And we've now added our application process on the MCOS website, so we have had more applicants come through. We have about two interviews, I think, next week. I think that helped with getting it on the MCOS website because that's where everybody that's in the police academy goes to look for a job. And I'm not sure, it wasn't on there before, so we're getting a lot of applicants in. And I also, when we did our strategic planning process on the police side, that was a big thing that the community wanted, was a school resource officer, and it also fit into our recruitment retention because it gives an opportunity, and, you know, people looking for a job want opportunities in maybe not just, you know, road patrol, so...
I'll yield for others. Thank you.
Just some understanding. So, this position, the authority over the position will still remain underneath you?
Yes.
So, anything that comes up, any concerns? There will be no other filtering? It will come directly to you and the concerns?
That's in the contract, yeah.
And how does this work with other security personnel that have been hired by the school system, whatever? They would be interacting with this individual, and any concerns would be handled how?
Well, I will leave that to...
We have a variety of different roles within the district, and you refer to the security folks. Those are, another term we use is community liaisons. We refer to them as more the eyes and the ears, but they don't have any real policing authority to speak of, even though one of them actually is a retired law enforcement officer. So, they would defer in all matters of law to the officers on site or call them in. They don't have any of those authorities whatsoever. So, we would always defer to law enforcement.
That's one of my concerns. I want to make sure we don't have a conflict in that type of situation, that our authorities are given the authority to do what they're supposed to do and make sure that crimes and things are dealt with appropriately. Because in the past, we've had concerns with our own officers, so we want to make sure that it's above board. The one other thing is we talk about how we split this position, and the idea is that we will be using it hopefully during the summertime to assist in other staffing shortages or needs. Do you feel that that's going to work, or will there be demands that potentially could end up being shifted back to the school if we don't have the ability to use that person? This may be for the chief.
I don't see that, and I think by the time they would be ready to move forward with the contract, we will have more police officers hired. I know they run Safety Town in the summertime. Other than that, our intent is to use that police officer to do traffic and then perhaps eliminate some overtime that's caused by vacations.
Yeah, I'm hoping to eliminate overtimes. I know in the past where we've done this, and unfortunately, we ended up incurring overtime because the individuals, we didn't have the staffing full, and we had to backfill our own positions. So, what are we can do to, I know, affect our own priorities for the city versus what may be a priority for the schools, may be a conflict, so... Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gearball. I can take over now. Any additional questions? Go ahead, Mr. Delarco, please.
Yeah, this is being presented to us as bringing back SRO to Saline. My understanding correctly that we already have an SRO officer through Pittsfield in the high school?
That's correct.
Okay, so then this would be a second SRO position that would only service the elementary school and middle school, correct?
In Liberty, yes.
Okay, so I guess I'm struggling to understand why we need two SROs. We have kids that are basically five to 14 years of age, and it sounds like you've already got community liaisons in place for security needs, and this is going to be roughly 25% commitment to the general fund from the city side. And I must say, I echo some of Councilwoman Dillon's concerns about this not really adequately addressing the staffing issues that we're facing with respect to the citizens of Saline in terms of increasing the police force in the community, presence of police, staffing issues that we currently are facing. If this officer is to be dedicated to the schools, then that's, you know, less budget that we have to work with in bringing on, backfilling additional positions. I mean, we have one in the high school.
Well, I think you raised some good concerns, Mr. Delarco, but let's settle some confusion, and Chief Radzik can correct me if I'm wrong. When we talk about staffing levels at the police department currently to date, December 5th, 2022, we're down one officer.
We're down two.
We're down two, okay. With a third likely, with a third position to become available probably within the first quarter of 2023. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. But to your previous point, based on applications and a recent post on MCOS, you have what you believe to be, what, two promising interviews next week?
Yes.
Is that fair? Okay, very good. Maybe between you and Mr. Ellis, you could respond to, there is certainly no debate. One SRO currently that services the high school and Harvest Elementary. Why do you see a need to have one that covers the school facilities within the corporate limits of Saline?
Yeah, so roughly half of our students are on that Pittsfield campus. There's one elementary school and then the high school, which has got about 1,800 students in it, 1,700, give or take. And the other half of those kids are in Saline. They're at the middle school, they're at the alternative high school, and I think it's important to note, whether there's a school resource officer in the building or not, there are still policing matters that occur. And so, even if there's not a school resource officer there, that doesn't preclude, and in fact, it happens on a fairly regular basis, the requirement or the necessity for an on-duty officer to come assist with issues at our buildings. Predominantly, the middle school and Liberty with regard to the alternative high school just because of the age of the students. But it is in our interest to have, you know, the two officers because you're talking about two very separate jurisdictions. We do have, and Chief Radzik can speak to this a little more than I can, there are some reciprocal agreements that allow for sharing of information and whatnot, but there are jurisdictional, you know, constraints where a school resource officer from Pittsfield cannot necessarily come to the middle school and deal with all of the issues that we have that come up there. The other thing I might just suggest is I know when you talk about the residents of Saline, our kids are residents of Saline, too. And I'm not trying to insult anybody by saying that, but they are, and so, I would think that we would want to take care of them as well.
And I'll also just add, we've had several meetings with the schools on the traffic congestion, and I see this SRO being part of trying to get a solution to some of the congestion and some direction. I know we had a meeting with, prior to the bond passing, and part of that was thinking about in the future where we're going to put the buses and how traffic's going to flow better, and just for the safety of the kids crossing the streets. I mean, we went through that right there off of Woodland, so I see this, an SRO helping out with that issue, too.
I appreciate you bringing that up, and I guess this comment would be directed to Assistant Superintendent Ellis. I don't mean to be pugilistic at quarter to nine on Monday night, but no, now that that bond passed, the school bond passed, and you have some additional resources, I do hope we can expeditiously reconvene and have focused discussions on traffic patterns specifically at the middle school. Because with growth in that vicinity, both on a commercial, industrial, and residential level, along with some forthcoming infrastructure work that's going to be taking place there next construction season, the trend just cannot continue. So, I'm confident that working together, we can solve that problem.
We share that.
Yeah. Let me just make a brief comment before I call for a vote on a motion to acknowledge receipt. I see great value in the school resource officer if the individual is appropriately trained and provided the resources necessary to complete their tasks. I see it as beneficial to the city, to the police department, and to the school district. I also think that instruction and getting that person in a classroom and directly interfacing with faculty and students in a positive way is profoundly beneficial to the area. My concern mirrors that of Councilmember Dillon's, and we discussed this when we prepped for tonight's meeting last Wednesday, and it's mainly from a financial perspective. So, I just want to make sure, and we have ample time to work this out, I want to make sure that the schools, the school board, because it's ultimately a policy decision on how you allocate financial resources, is committed to this position long-term. We will work to uphold our end of the bargain. If you provide the 75% of funding on a consistent basis, I think, again, it can be mutually beneficial, but again, not meaning to be argumentative or disrespectful, we just, we can't go through the dog and pony show if there's not, if there's not a desire to fund this on an ongoing basis. So, I will support the subsequent motion as presented, and hopefully, we can resolve some of these issues. And I would add this, Mr. Ellis, that if it takes my council colleagues, myself speaking to our friends on the school board or any members of staff to convince them of the benefit of this and funding it long-term and making that commitment, I'm happy to do so.
Appreciate that.
Chief Radzik, anything else you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Okay, then we'll call for the vote on the motion to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a subsequent motion to approve or not to approve?
Move to approve.
Moved by CO to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Camero Sulek. Is there any additional discussion? Mr. Seal?
Yes, I just want to make a comment to some of the questions that have come up. Mr. Ellis hit on the fact that having a police officer in the schools helps the children identify more readily with the police, feel more comfortable in their presence, and so on. But I need to tell you, having managed for a while in the city of Ann Arbor, the school resource officers we had there in the city of Ann Arbor, that it works the other way, too. There's an incalculable benefit for the officers to learn who the players are at an early age. A lot of these kids kind of self-identify as the ones who may need extra attention, and it always accrued to the police department's benefit to have those officers there and being able to say, oh, yeah, I know who this sounds like. So, there's benefits both ways, and it's not just a one-sided deal. So, I support it.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Councilmember Dillon?
Thank you. I would feel more comfortable if we had some hard numbers, some hard hour commitments, what we had in the past, and sort of looking at this. I feel like we're committing to something that sounds really great on paper of the schools are paying the majority of this position. We're going to be paying 25%, but I'd like to see what that looks like for us and what that impact is going to be. I understand that there are some budget numbers out there, but also what the long-term costs are going to be for the city as far as legacy costs and such. That's where I think we start having issues, is we don't look far enough ahead on those pieces.
Mr. Terry, as the PD's budget analyst, do you care to comment on this? Mr. Terry, as the PD's budget analyst, do you care to comment on this? Or working in conjunction with Chief Radzic, can you get us some numbers in the not-too-distant future?
We've got numbers that are pertinent to this year's budget that we're currently in, because this was, as it came into this year's budget, it was a new authorized position within the budget. So we've got dollar figures for what it would have cost this year for everybody had this started with the July 1 fiscal year that we're currently in. So I can provide you with all that.
I think if the chief can disseminate that through the city manager or directly to city council, that would be great. Mr. Gearbock?
My only concern, of course, is priorities. And in the event that, should we have a shortage of officers in the city, that the SRO position may not take a priority to the city's needs, and that however that's accomplished in our agreement, just to make sure that occurs. Because I think that is going to be an issue, as we talked about. Everybody's facing this shortage, and I support the idea of this, and I agree, it's a way of exposing children to understanding that law enforcement is there for their needs and approaching that. I just want to make sure that we understand our safety may be more needed in a different approach if things change or something occurs. And then lastly, again, I'm hoping that whatever the authority is and how it plays out in the work with the other security staff, definitely continue to be driven by our police officers. Thank you.
Mr. Grant Sulek, one last comment before we vote.
Yeah, just the concern of how the students and parents that are not comfortable with a police officer in the building and in the classroom, so that that is handled very, you know, fairly. And going back to my colleague, Mr. COO's comment, and no disrespect, but of knowing who the players are, I would want to make sure that there's no bias with that too. I mean, there is information and consistency in some situations, but that does breed bias and discrimination. So that's where I think we have to be very, very careful, and not to traumatize students that are very uncomfortable, so.
And that's where I think the piece comes in, that we find the right person for this position, they receive the proper training, and I always say, we don't target people, we target behaviors, so.
I could just add a little bit to that. We talked a lot about that, and it was both at the Pittsfield level, but also during the Celine Police Department strategic planning discussion about some of those issues that you bring up. And when I go back to how important the right person is, a lot of that trauma, a lot of the concern, came from the high school and came from some of the students that were at the high school. And if you had been at our graduation a year ago, our school resource officer was present, he was present at the request of the students. And I looked down for a minute, and if you've ever been to a graduation, there's a line that comes, and the students come across, and they shake superintendent's hand, and superintendent is often the first person they shake hands with. Somehow, some way, our school resource officer got in front of the superintendent and was hugging each of the kids as they came by, because they wanted to hug him. And I've got a picture of that that I've got in my office, because it speaks to how important those relationships are. So you're right, that's something we need to be sensitive to, and we'll continue to.
And that would be ideal, you know, that all students feel, you know, feel that way. I would want the oversight, you know, the oversight to be very careful to where if it's not working so well, that it's not, it doesn't catch us off-guard, and that we listen to our, and that we listen to our students. I'm not saying that we won't, but especially in this sensitive area. That's all that I wanted to just make mention of, and I know this has been vetted and talked about quite a bit by both the schools and the city, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Move by COO, second by Kamir Sulek to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it, the motion carries five to one. Thank you both, appreciate your time. We move on to Agenda Item 22-316, Healthcare Task Force Extension Request. I'll actually move this one. I'll move to acknowledge receipt of the November 28th, 2022 memo from Healthcare Task Force Chairperson Schible, and to approve or not to approve a 12-month extension to the Healthcare Task Force ending December 30th, 2023.
So moved.
I'm the mover, you want me to be the second?
Second.
Very good. We appreciate everyone's patience this evening. If our new chairperson could come forward, introduce herself, and if you'd like to acknowledge the members of the task force who are with you this evening, that would be fabulous.
Good evening. Thank you. It's my honor to stand before you as the new chairperson of the Healthcare Task Force. If everybody would like to stand up. This is everybody that was available tonight to join us. I just want to take a moment of your time, it's been a long night, but I want to just hit on some of the challenges that the task force faced and what my vision is to bring it forward. I don't want to spend a lot of time on the pandemic, it's a dead horse at this point, but I would be remiss if I didn't address some of the challenges that the pandemic presented to the task force. Mostly, it has had a huge impact on healthcare as a whole, right? Strategic plans for healthcare organizations, what they were looking at for their five- and 10-year plan in 2019 are out the window, because they're facing increased financial costs for staffing and resources. Their expansionary plans have changed or they're on hold, which means that our conversations with them are a long game. It's not something we're going to achieve in two months or three months. We need to continue to have those conversations and build those relationships. Given the interest from IHA and some of the other organizations that we saw during this timeframe, I'm confident and reassured that we are going to find someone that is the right fit for our community. It's just going to take a little bit of time and continue relationship-building. The task force faced some challenges too, right? It meant virtual meetings and difficulty getting out into the community because of restrictions. But in the time that we've had as a task force, we've been able to complete a two-phase needs-based assessment. We have the data from the first survey complete, you guys saw that when we previously talked to you, and we're working on collecting or completing the processing of the secondary survey, so it's going to give us an even better picture of what the community needs. We've been able to start conversations with key players in some major healthcare institutions, and my plan is to continue those conversations. We have a solid foundation of ideas and ways to bring access for both healthcare and wellness initiatives into the community. I spent some time looking at the Five Healthy Towns Initiative that's going on in our neighboring communities, and I think there's a lot of inspiration and ideas that we can draw from to also bring health and wellness into our community. I think it should be a forefront, access to healthcare and wellness should be a priority. It adds value to being a Celine citizen. So what are we going to do with the extension? I know that's the question everybody has. What are we going to do with 12 more months? First and foremost, we're going to review that data. We need that data, we need statistically valid information to take to the stakeholders. We're going to take our data, and we're going to also look at the county-level data and make sure that we have a good picture of the needs, so when we're talking to stakeholders, we can provide them with the reasons why they want to come here, and that there's going to be use of the facilities that they bring here. We need it to be valuable to our citizens, but it has to be fiscally valuable to those organizations. Otherwise, it, long-term, it's not a good solution, because they won't be able to stay if there's not financial viability in the relationship. Also, my intention is to start with strategic planning, so that we have efficient use of our resources and we can set some goals, so at the end of 12 months, I can give you measurable outcomes. Increase use of social media to share information about resources that already exist, and increase awareness about health and wellness within the community. We have ideas about promoting health and wellness and improving what we call just awareness of how preventative measures and social health aspects, right? You know, one of our ideas is, like during November, it's Men's Health Awareness Month, we can use our social media platform to really push out access to screening and statistics about men's health, things like that, so that we can become visible and make sure that we're partnering with community members to increase awareness. Continue to build relationships with healthcare organizations, so that we can stay on their radar when they are ready to grow and expand. We want them to know that we want them to come here, and if we don't continue those relationships, they're going to move on and go to other organizations. We're seeing healthcare organizations pivot and merge. Two huge healthcare organizations, both on either side of the state, have merged into one, and we sit in the middle. So if they know that we're looking to bring healthcare into our community, then we're going to be able to successfully initiate, which is, that was the primary mission of this task force. So the other thing we want to do is to build a repository for the community of the resources that exist. We want people to have one place that they can go, whether it's to learn about transportation to appointments, elder care, you know, prescription assistance, mental health resources, whatever those things are, we want to bring it together in one space, so people can go to that repository and look to the resources that are already existing in our community. I want to leave you with one last thought. Everyone on this task force is a volunteer. We serve because we believe in the mission and vision of increased healthcare and wellness initiatives within our community. An extension is going to allow us to see it through. We have a fantastic foundation. We just need a little bit more time to execute some goals. There's little to no cost to giving us the, it's just our time in building those relationships.
Thank you. Excellent. You may be seated.
Thank you.
Yeah. You can stay, actually, if the chair, if she could, you wouldn't mind staying put at the podium, because there may be some questions best addressed by you. Again, I'd like to defer to the council rep. Mr. COO, you've served as the council liaison to the Healthcare Task Force since its inception. Anything you'd like to add at this time?
Just thought I've always been impressed with the abilities and the enthusiasm of the ladies that are on the committee. I think I'm the only thorn among roses at this point, and that I think that they deserve the opportunity to move forward. It's been difficult, as they say, the health situation kind of impacted a lot of the times. We could have met as a healthcare committee, strange as that seems, but that's a very true statement in kind of the problems we've encountered along the way. So I think that, like she said, it doesn't cost anything except the time and the people involved, and I've always been impressed that the people are willing to devote the time. So I think they deserve the affirmative vote to move forward.
Very good. And let me just add one thing. When this was first conceived, I realized that it would be a long journey, that progress would take some time, and that it would take probably better part of a year to lay the foundation. I think the foundation is basically laid, it's just moving on to that next step, and using the data, evaluating the data, and then using that data to attract additional services. So, one, thank you to everybody who is involved, who has been involved in this initiative, or who has contributed insight or perspective, because that's valuable. I'd also add, and I've said this at nauseam over the course of probably three years now, if we look at our community and we assess where we've been over the past 10 years and what has changed, one of the most glaring significant deficiencies is the lack of quality healthcare amenities for Celineans of all ages, especially if you compare 2022 nearing 2023 with where we were a decade ago. And if we're going to remain an attractive, desirable community with a high quality of life, we have to work to try and bring those amenities back. We have to, at a minimum, try, because our residents, I think, deserve nothing less. So I'm happy to open up for any questions from my council colleagues. Mayor Potem Gearbock?
Yeah, I'm encouraged by the new leadership and the running and new direction that you all are taking, and I'm hoping that you will possibly encourage other individuals that have participated with you to come back into the fold and maybe introduce some more additional input. I know there are some members that have expressed to me they would like to be part of it again, and their connections with Trinity Health and some of those other aspects would be great. The one thing that I would, and I mean, I'm asking this because I think it's one of the ideas of understanding a little bit more, is a regular quarterly update to us as the community, which I believe that's part of the condition, to which we can then understand where you're moving forward, because it is such a changing aspect. And as you mentioned, the merger of the hospitals with, I can't remember the new name of the one in Detroit, but...
Corwell is the new...
Corwell, yeah, that's it.
I think they might, just anecdotally, I think they may now be the biggest healthcare system in the state, because Beaumont and Spectrum, Spectrum is the west side of the state, that's Grand Rapids, Kelm's Zoo, that area. Beaumont was formerly, they actually had already acquired Oakwood and Botford, and so that was a fairly large system, but now they are one system called Corwell, and we're in the donut hole. So finding the key players in those organizations and making sure they know we're looking is going to be vital. And I'm on board with quarterly assessments. I think performance measures are valuable to know that we are actually achieving those goals we're setting out, and like...
Especially with the validation of data, and you mentioned, because I know we've done some of those surveys and making sure that they've reached the right people and the individuals, and the companies, and all those, and we get all that data, and especially now, we should bring some competition in, because U of M and IHA, I think, need to wake up that some of our little communities like us need to have those services, and if someone else can provide it for us, then we need to bring them in.
Yes, and I firmly believe that it's about the right fit, right? There's got to be value, because our citizens need to know that they can access it because their insurance covers services through that entity, that they don't have to go two hours away to be admitted to a primary admitting facility. Those things all matter, so those are questions we have to ask when we're looking at bringing in healthcare, is how does it add value and access for the people who live here, while we're also recognizing that they're a business entity and they're making their decision from a business standpoint? They need financial stability, we need value for our citizens. And that's the conversation we have to bring it together, to make sure that it's a good long-term fit. We don't want them to come and in two years decide they're gone and we're back at square one, right? We want to build a longstanding relationship with somebody. And so I'm absolutely willing to make sure that we get quarterly reports, so that you guys can see what we're doing.
If I may jump in, that was actually a requirement when the group was first established.
Yep.
You know, Mr. COO, acting as your council liaison, could certainly provide...
Yep.
Bimonthly verbal reports, but I think having something in writing, beginning maybe at our first and second meeting in March, and then every quarter subsequent to that would be very beneficial.
Absolutely.
Very good. Anything else, Mr. Gearbock?
Nope.
Any additional questions, Ms. Dillon, and then Councilmember Kamir Sulek?
Thank you. And I appreciate your approach. I love data, I love data points. So my question is better understanding, what are the needs of these providers, what information do they need from the city, so we can make sure that when we're doing these surveys, we're doing it? We are suffering from serious survey fatigue in this community, and so I feel like we need to be very concise...
Yep.
And just get out there, dig down, get as much response as we can to the right questions, and then take that data back and analyze it.
So I think we've asked the right questions, especially in the secondary survey. We really dug in, and I'm looking forward to having the results, so that I can give them to you guys, so you can have a better picture. I don't think we need to survey the citizens anymore. I think what I have, or what we have from the two primary needs-based surveys, plus the contact and connection with Washtenaw County, who's also monitoring these things, is going to give us some very statistically valid information to present to these organizations to show that there's gaps, right? And I know one of the big concerns and one of the things we, you know, we've talked about is, well, U of M and St. Joe are just right there, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's accessible at all hours, you know, or that transportation is easy, or that it's actually the healthcare that people, it's the services that people need. Navigating those big healthcare systems is challenging, we want people to have ease of access, we want it to be, you know, the services that actually they frequently use, like lab draws and, you know, primary care physicians. And I think we're all struggling post-pandemic to see our primary care physician, there's just no appointments available, but those kind of things, right? And so we're going to take the information, that's one of my beginning, you know, first beginning of 2023, is to get that survey data and process it, so we have that information. And then we can maybe even consider building out a packet, something that we have ready to go when we're talking to these entities, to make sure we're providing them with valuable information to help them make that decision.
Fantastic. The other piece that I will say, you've touched on the word a few times, is transportation. I think that there could be an opportunity in, within this year, to partner with the city and figure out, we keep talking about transportation, right now, there's a huge population of our community that can't get to their doctors because they don't have that. We're not going to solve that problem anytime soon with bringing somebody in. This is a long-term vision.
Yep.
But people still need to get to the doctors.
Yes.
So if we can find a way to get a better transportation system within this community to get people to those doctors, I think that is, that's an immediate need that we have, that I'd love to see be an offshoot from the Healthcare Task Force.
Absolutely, and I think it's going to be a combination of what resources do we have in the community for transportation, and what do we know that exists in the county, like the area agency on aging also offers transportation support. But that's not necessarily enough, or maybe not everybody qualifies for that. So what can we look at, at big picture? And so that's another goal for me personally, as I take over as chair and kind of step into the leadership role, is understanding and aligning kind of what the expectations are for the task force with also what our vision is for what we can accomplish within the task force, both short-term and long-term. I think there's some proverbial low-hanging fruit we can absolutely get to in the next 12 months, and then we can continue to build on that long game of what, who can we get to come into the community and serve people, and whether that's a specific healthcare institution or a developer who wants to bring in a multi-use medical suite that would rent out or lease out to more than one healthcare institution and be able to offer more services.
Fantastic. Thank you so very much.
Councilmember Kamir Sulek?
Yeah, I'll try to keep it short.
Yeah.
I agree with what, you know, my colleagues have said, this is critical for Celine and our, you know, surrounding area. And I, we know this was a heavy lift, and I see that you've done a ton. There's been a lot of progress, and this is going to build on that. I, you know, I commend everybody for all the work that they've, heart and soul, you can just tell, you know, your excitement for this, and it is something that we... can just tell, you know, your excitement for this, and it is something that we know our community needs. And you're on the right path. This got started, you know, hit the ground running, and I couldn't imagine us not having this until we get to that, that place.
Yes. And I think that, in my vision, long-term, is that this helps us to promote health and wellness. We've talked, we've touched on this, you guys have touched on it multiple times tonight, right? Health and safety of our citizens. And I think that being able to be proud and promote that we put that as a high value for the people who live here is invaluable, right? It's a huge draw to becoming a part of the community.
Yes, and having, and having younger voices and knowing that students are interested in this, you know, a couple of the Celine Youth Council, shameless plug, are involved. And I know there's been a lot of work that everybody's done, and I would encourage other people to join, and even in a, you know, every little bit helps, because we're getting closer.
Yes. And as far as representation and voices, we don't, like, we have a very diverse background as it is. As you can probably tell, I have a healthcare background. But not, but also, like, just citizens of the community stepping up to speak to and be a voice for what they need and what they see adds value is just as important as those of us who understand the system. I can execute project management and navigate the politics of healthcare, but I don't necessarily, and I am because of what I do and because of what some of our volunteers do. We do recognize where disparity is and where the shortfalls are, but that doesn't mean we don't want to hear everybody else's voice and make sure we're not missing something. You know, we want to make sure we're getting all the key points and making sure that this brings valuable resources to the community.
Agreed. And I'll leave it at that. I strongly, I strongly support this.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your time and your leadership. And thank you all for your involvement in the Healthcare Improvement Task Force. For citizens who may be interested in your work and are inclined to get involved, please remind us of your meeting times, more specifically, when your next meeting is.
We meet the last, is it the third, fourth Monday here at 7:00 P. M.
Okay. So you...
We are skipping the December meeting in lieu of the holidays.
Okay.
Because it falls right between...
So the fourth Monday in January, here at 6:00 P. M.
Seven.
Seven, excuse me. Okay, very good. And that's on our meeting calendar, too, if there's any citizens who are interested. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? We have a motion on the floor moved by Marl, seconded by Kamir Shulak, to acknowledge and to approve. There is none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Appreciate it very much. Thanks for your patience this evening. We move on to New Business Item 22-319, Rescinding Resolution 21-211-1. This will be a motion to rescind Resolution 21-211-1 and authorize, not authorize, the city manager to designate ARPA funds to city council-approved projects that fall in the criterion guidelines of the federal program.
Move to rescind and to authorize.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Gearbox, your second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Seo. City Manager O'Toole, you can make a brief statement.
Certainly. We covered it a little bit while the auditors were here, but essentially, when we had council adopt the original resolution, it was before all of the information regarding reporting on the actual expenditure of ARPA funds came out, certainly more than justified with our receipt of those dollars in terms of the lost revenue, either from general fund or rec complex. But what we've identified is that it would be a rather complicated task to individually then account for the line items that those were subsequently spent on, you know, in wages and fringes. It would be much simpler for us to account for it all outgoing in one large capital project or one large line item expense.
Got it. Seems clear enough. Questions for the city manager? Ms. Dillon?
So just for clarification, we are not reallocating these dollars.
Correct.
You have a project, there's not going to be a discussion about, well, we think money should go to this line item or to that.
No, the direction of council has already been enacted in terms of how we allocated dollars to, from general fund to the rec center. Basically, all we have to do now is, from an accounting perspective, then show those ARPA dollars being spent on some other existing line item within the general fund.
Mr. Gearbox?
Just a comment. This is more of a show game. Unfortunately, we've already spent the money in theory, because we did, but because of the way that we had to get the money, as the accountants explained, was that we get it because we lost revenue, but they still want to know how you're going to spend it. So even though you could spend it in the rec center, the issue would be, we bring it down to so much detail in the reporting and that complexity, that we put ourselves at a very costly approach. It's not that we're doing anything illegal, it's the idea of, if you can do it more simplistic and meet the requirements of the federal government, that's the best way to do it. And we still achieve everything that we're supposed to, spend the money appropriately. So I'm more than willing to rescind this, to make it more easier for our staff to be able to report to the feds and to heap and appease our auditors.
Very well stated. If there's nothing further, then, thank you, City Manager O'Toole. And there's no additional discussion. We have a motion on the floor moved by Gearbox, seconded by Seo, to rescind and authorize. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The last action item of the evening, 22-321, Wastewater Treatment Plant Rehabilitation Project Owners Representative Engineering Services. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the proposal from Arcadius dated November 29th, 2022, for support services for wastewater treatment rehabilitation project in the amount not to exceed 100,000. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Gearbox to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. City Engineer Humphreys, thank you for your patience this evening. Do you care to make a brief comment on this project for the public and for council's benefit?
Yes, I will make, I will be brief. This wastewater rehabilitation project, everyone is well aware of. It's a very expensive project that we have received SRF funding for, and the funding has a very aggressive schedule attached to it. We need to have design documents in hand, ready to bid by May of this coming year of 2023. Typically, with a project of this size, I would like to see a peer review at 30%, 70% in final plans of another engineering consulting firm, because we're going to get large construction documents, huge plans, that staff does not have the time nor capability, quite frankly, to review the coatings on everything that's in the plan and such. So, but because of the aggressive time schedule, time schedule with the funding, we were brainstorming a little bit and thought, instead of the peer review, why don't we go with this owner's representative? Basically getting a second consulting firm, having, being present as part of our team as an owner's rep, and for this project to help with all of the things, all the decisions we're going to have to make. Because of the aggressive design schedule, we have decisions that will need to be made in a very quick manner, and our staff is operating the plant, they also have the water plant to operate, and Tetra Tech is very busy doing the design. And so it made sense to look to who submitted qualifications for the rehabilitation project, and Arcadius was the other firm that submitted. They are a national firm with local presence, a national firm known for the wastewater treatment expertise. And it gives us the depth of, if we want to talk about, like I said, coatings, or if there's a certain aspect of the plant that the person on site doesn't know, they have the depth of their whole consulting firm to lean back on. And this is a time and materials contract, in that sense, it has little risk to us, we're going to start to use it. Hopefully, we build up a team on our behalf so that this project can be the best that it can be with the aggressive schedule. And Arcadius, what did I want to say? Arcadius Time and Materials? I feel like there's one more thing I wanted to say, and it's slipped my mind at this time.
City Engineer Humphreys, I was going through my records this past week, and I'm not, I'm not aware that, at least during my tenure as either a council member or mayor we've ever worked with, are Arcadius. As you indicated, they're a national firm with a local presence. Have you, one, have you either worked with them in a previous capacity, or do you have any indirect experience that you can speak to?
I have not worked with them directly, no, but I've heard of their, I want to, they're known for the wastewater. And I'm not a process person, I don't have a background in wastewater. So, and I know that this team was brought in to put this request for qualifications together because of their strong expertise in the wastewater business. So I feel very strongly that this is a good team to help support us.
Very good. I'm not always inclined to spend extra money, but time and time again, history has shown us in this particular organization that when we're dealing with large, comprehensive, multidimensional products, outs, an independent third party to review, to evaluate, having additional sets of eyes is extremely beneficial, not only for the project, but for the city more broadly. So I will enthusiastically be supporting the motion that's on the floor, moved by Gearbox, seconded by Dillon, to approve. City Manager O'Toole, is there any comment that you would like to make in regards to this matter?
No, just I think this is consistent with the messaging that Engineer Humphreys and I have been sharing from the beginning, which is, this is going to be an all-hands-on-deck, and we need the support to bring a project of this size and scope to fruition successfully. So I do hope we have support in continuing with that.
Very good. Mr. Gearbox, I don't know, did the wastewater treatment, water treatment ad hoc committee discuss this matter at all?
Yeah.
Please.
And that was a recommendation from them, because we understand the, you know, it is, it's the capacity of what our staff can do, and having the ability to be able to have someone else's eyes look at it. And as we know, this was successful with the rec center when we did that, and we know what a disaster the DPW facility was when we didn't have it in place. So it's clear, as you mentioned, history has shown, this is a good investment in us, and it really is another kind of a risk aversion that we want to include.
Yeah. Very good. Questions for the city engineer? Mr. Seo?
My only question, my only concern would be that with the, an additional company like this, are we getting too many cooks in the kitchen?
No, I, I, I share that concern, and I think with this, there's enough work for everybody. Not only do we have the, not only does our staff need help with making decisions on the actual wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation, but we have a consent order that we're currently required to comply with, that requires work plans and continual correspondence with Eagle. We also have an ONM manual that's getting finalized by Tetra Tech that needs to be implemented at our plant. There's also the fact of operating the plant right now with some, you know, some existing operational hurdles. So just to have somebody at the plant to, for Bill to talk to about the concern of the day, that's not me, because I don't have a lot of process background. So I think that this project is plenty big enough for more cooks in the kitchen. And this will keep Tetra Tech, like, that's what I mean, by Tetra Tech has plenty to do to just design and get, figure that out. There's a lot of other stuff to do with the plant while design is occurring. So that's why I think in this case, no, this is not too many cooks in the kitchen.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Ms. Dillon, and then Mr. Kamir Shulak.
So just to kind of understand, I mean, what does this company have for skin in the game, to actually know that they're doing adequate review? Like, what is their accountability to this process?
Well, they, when they sat down in the, their interview for the statement of qualifications, the reason they were interested in it is they have a local, a couple of local engineers who are, want to do what's best for the community of Celine, who live here, who have students in the city, or have kids that go to Celine schools. A couple of the, or the main project engineer, Fred Simmons, lives here, has children in the schools here, and is interested, because it's local. So, and I find that myself, when you, when you are in civil engineering, but it's happening in your backyard, you're very interested in what's going on in your own backyard. So that's what's, how it was presented to us, is that they have this local interest and want to do what's best for the community. And their, their proposal was very thorough, with a lot of alternate options available, that they did a very nice job with their proposal. This was a very thorough proposal. And this is, their proposal is what actually gave me the confidence that this design can be done in the timeframe that the SRF stated. If we hadn't gotten two proposals on the, you know, for our statement of qualifications, I would have been concerned for the timeframe. But because they came in with this aggressive schedule and were very motivated to do what was right for the city of Celine, it gave me confidence that it could be done. Don't get me wrong, this is a very aggressive schedule still, but I, getting, so I do think that is why they're, to answer your question, is because of wanting to do what's best for the community.
And the 100,000, is that start to finish? Is that a phase?
That was kind of a, let's get us, a grab to get us going. I think that will, if this works out, I imagine that we will be coming back for more, maybe months from now, if we're utilizing them to the capacity that we should. I think this is just similar to the design proposal, probably a phase one of this project. This is a multi-year project.
Thank you.
Mr. Kamir Shulak?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you will be monitoring this company to make sure that they are doing what they're supposed to be doing, especially with the schedule, with all the different projects that we're doing. So are you, are you still able to, and I'm not questioning your ability, to watch over all these, you know, there's so many ingredients in the pot, that, you know, to monitor, to make sure that everybody's doing their part, so that we can meet the aggressive, the aggressive schedule?
Right. And I'm going to defer a little bit to Superintendent Briggs, because a lot of this will fall under his, not my own. I'm pushing for this, because I think this is an important project that needs additional eyes on it. And I do not have a process background, and I'm plenty busy in just the collection system and distribution system and other aspects of our infrastructure. I intend for this to be an additional tool in Bill's toolbox, absolutely. And again, I'm hoping that this person becomes part of his team at the plant. I think, for instance, one of the first things I think they'll work on is this, there's a work plan that's due to Eagle here mid-December, and that will be a good something for them to get, jump in, see where we're at, and also just, because I envision that this person will be helpful to Bill in ways that his current staff are not.
Okay. Sounds very reasonable to me. We have a lot on our plate.
Yeah, because the current staff are busy just running the plan, is what I mean. Not that they're not capable, they're just, they just have a job to do, and they're very busy with their current job. That's what I meant by that comment.
I will wholeheartedly support this. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Ms. Dillon?
Just very quickly, and this is just more, just a procedural thing. I think it would be very beneficial at some point in the very near future if we can get the ad hoc committee to provide an update and to establish a timeframe for whether it's weekly, monthly, what kind of project updates we're going to have, and the method in which they're going to be released. I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah, I think we need to get to a point where we actually have some final designs before we're ready to start publicly updating. We've talked about having, in mid-January, I believe, a bidder's open house here, and then subsequent to that, when we're closer to final design and have some renderings that we can share, a public town hall, and then a second bidder's meeting that will be more detailed, specific on the scope of the project. I would expect probably February, March, we'd start doing more regular updates, because we'll have the final design nearing completion or at a more substantial percentage of completion. And then it will really be dependent on the contractor's timeline from there, what sort of progress we expect to make. There will be probably some substantial lead time before major construction work starts, simply because of the nature of the project and the equipment that we'll be waiting on.
Right. I think having Mr. Gearbox, the council rep, provide, if necessary, bimonthly updates would be great. But to Councilmember Dillon's point, I think it would be helpful, especially for the community, if we added the wastewater treatment, water treatment ad hoc committee to our, what I hope to complete in the first quarter or the first four months of 2023, which is to have an annual report from all of our committees and important task forces. And I'll be messaging on that again probably next month, but I really want to get that done in the first four months, because historically, one of the problems we've had is those have languished, and then we're getting reports from the previous year in June and July or August, and they're not particularly relevant. So it's a goal of mine to get that done, first four months of 2023. And I think adding wastewater, wastewater, water ad hoc committee to that roster would be appropriate. Anything else on this motion? City Engineer Humphreys, thank you very much. There is a motion on the floor moved by Gearbox, seconded by Dillon, to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda tonight, commission, committee, and task force reports. I'm going to start now to my left and end to my right. Mr. Del Orco, any commission, committee, or task force reports?
Yeah. So one of the things that the Environmental Commission has been concerned about is the lack of collection, recycling collection services for our multifamily housing units. This is a problem in the city that we're attempting to address, and I took the opportunity with Committee Member Al Hodge to go down to DPW and meet with DPW Director Searls to discuss ways we can approach this. And it's sort of a two-part component. And it's sort of a two-part component. We basically have a contract with Waste Management that's coming up for renewal, June of 2024. And in anticipation of this, we want to look at ways in which we can renegotiate with Waste Management to provide this service to our multifamily housing dwelling units. And then another piece to this is our ordinance that addresses how to set the appropriate fee structure for collection and charges, has not been reviewed since the early 1970s. So that's something that should probably come to code review committee as well.
Very good. Excellent. Appreciate your work on that. Look forward to hearing more. Mr. Girba, commission, committee or task force reports?
Not a number of committees. I do have an update from the wastewater treatment plant. As you know, we were, this past week, been trying to clear out the, let me get this right, Ms. O'Toole, the digester?
Yes.
Emptying the digester as, as recommended. As we know, there's been an issue with a lot of the stuff in the digester, which ends up being a lot of the rags, but everything, but a digester probably should be cleaned out every five, maybe 10 years. We understand that this one had not been cleaned out in a while. And so the attempt is to try and empty that entire digester so that some additional repairs can be done with it and that'll help. But as a result, there are some issues related with the materials and stuff that are being removed from it that need to be dewatered so that they can then be taken to the landfill and basically disposed of. So if there's been orders and notification, it says a result of that, we, you know, we do apologize, but it's one of those processes that we need to take care of as we proceed with the idea of the revitalization of the plant. A number of other repairs and things have been going on at this point. Mr. Briggs has been working very hard at making sure that we are prepared to go into the winter and that there won't be that many hiccups again. There's a number of items that he's been worked at, worked on in the last few months. And although we would like to say we're seeing the end of the tunnel, that tunnel seems to get longer and longer, but at least there's some brightness at the end. So if there's any other questions, please let me know and we'll let you know in the future about our updates.
Good. Councilmember Dillon, any commission, committee or task force reports?
Um, let's see, for December, district and zoning board of appeals did not meet. The fire board meets on Wednesday of this week. I believe we have a work meeting at 5:00 PM and a regular business meeting at 6:00 PM. Those meetings are held at the firehouse and open to the public. I think it was last week that I attended the Andalina Farm status meeting, that's a monthly status meeting. The impacts for the city right now is on Austin Road. There is some active construction that is not going to be completed this construction cycle. I think that they've missed their window for concrete. So I think what's going to end up happening is it's going to be sort of closed up as pretty as can be. The cones will be removed and they'll come back to it in the spring. And basically, there won't be a lot of construction happening now over the winter season, so you shouldn't see a tremendous amount of activity. There are a lot of residents on that property, but there should not be a lot more building until spring.
Very good. Mr. Seo, any commission, committee or task force reports?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Mayor Sulek?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, then we'll transition to reports or other announcements. Mr. Del Orco, do you have any?
I have none.
Mr. Girba?
I just want to recommend to everyone that we will have the Christmas at the farm this weekend from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. Santa will be there, the house will be open, there'll be some crafters. And I'm trying to think, Mrs. Claus too, so I don't want to forget her. Also, just to let you know, there was a, a concern with the furnace at the farmhouse, which the heat exchanger had cracked, whatever. We were lucky, Mr. Searls has worked his due diligence to get us someone to replace it. And I understand they are working today to resolve it. And our furnace will be up and running hopefully by the, well, be up and running for our vent on Sunday. There was concerns that potentially, I think I mentioned before, that monoxide, carbon monoxide was a concern, but he has worked hard to get this done and I really appreciate it. We all at the historical society, thank you.
Remind us again, what was the year of that furnace?
Well, at least the 70s, but I think it might be even older than that because of the conversion.
Fifty-six?
Fifty-six.
Yeah, we knew it was kind of in the 50s.
Oh, okay. Mr. Girba, I was actually thinking of this over the, the weekend, and I can have our PR generalist follow up with you later this week, but I'd like to do our weekly news around Celine at Renshaw Farm with you or one of the historic society members plugging Christmas at the farm.
Perfect.
If you're available.
Yep.
So we'll have that, that message will be sent tomorrow. I have two things, just a reminder that we have a budget and a finance town hall here in council chambers tomorrow at 6:00 PM. I did chat briefly with city treasurer, L. Cole today, and she previewed with me her presentation, her PowerPoint, which is excellent. So if there's anybody in the, well, there's not many people left in the audience, but if there's anybody in the audience or those who may be reading or watching about this meeting after the fact, if you're interested in knowing about our, our budget, how we allocate and spend dollars, tomorrow will really be a crash course. So it'll kind of be municipal budgeting 101. So I encourage you to attend. And I'm not sure we'll have somebody here to record, but we will have all the appropriate materials on, on the web or on social media later this week. And then perhaps the city manager or DPW can confirm this, but I was in touch with several people today. The streetlights on South Ann Arbor between Michigan Ave and Henry, were they restored today?
We'll know, I'll know in the morning.
Okay.
We did some, a lot of work today.
Okay. If not, then probably in the very near future.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Please keep us in the loop on that. Councilmember Dillon, any reports or another announcements?
Uh, the only announcement that I have, and I'll defer, I'll just make a statement and maybe Mr. Searls can direct, is leaf collection and where the status of it.
We're gonna...
Sorry, we didn't have a microphone for you.
Sorry, I didn't know, I didn't think this was coming up. We are continuing to finish up what was put out on the end date of the 27th of November. We know there were piles we didn't get to, so we're continuing through to finish that up. Officially, it's over for loose leaf. The bagged collection will be...
This week.
This week, Friday, Thursday and Friday. But we're gonna still pick up what we know we didn't get to.
Okay, so anything that's out, people should just assume you're going to make one more pass?
Yep.
Or throughout the city?
Yes, we're, we're basically in our last pass right now, yes.
Okay, fantastic. And then the other comment I wanted to ask you about, and I think I sent you an email about this last week, was Waste Management decided to pick up recycling at 6:00 AM. Much of the chagrin of very, a lot of people will say, on the west side of the town, myself included, that went running after them with my bin down the street. I think that we need to have a conversation with them, that we're not supposed to start that early?
Um, just so you know, when I got the email, I did put in a call to Brian. Brian was actually on vacation. I spoke briefly with Chantel, who will be replacing him as our rep, and we're, we're going to work things out when Brian gets here. I want, I want her and him together as we go through this, because she'll be our main point of contact at our next contract.
Well, and I wanted to end by saying that obviously you had made contact because later, or maybe it was even on Saturday, they made a round.
Yeah.
And anybody that still had a cart out, they were still dumping them for them.
Exactly.
So I appreciated that you followed up with them.
What I want to try to do is give the tentative route, because they use the fleet tracker on their trucks, and not saying that that's what time, they won't be in front of your house at that time, but that's going to be the normal time for them to be by your house. They'll help people, you know, be on time with their trash more.
Right.
And they do have the ability through their technology to provide that to us. So that was the meaning that I wanted to have after the hurry up and go back and get...
And I think it was sort of a culmination of a lot of factors, I'll be honest with you. It was an extremely windy Wednesday night, and so I think a lot of people did not put recycling out because they tend to just blow everywhere.
Yeah.
And thought, oh, I'll catch it Thursday morning before I leave for work.
But they got out before the early bird.
They did. So I just wanted to say thank you for following up on that.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Searls. Mr. Seo, any other reports or announcements?
Nothing.
Mr. Mayor Sulek?
Yeah, just real quick, the, the Chamber of Commerce holiday parade was a real success. I, I think most of us were there. A shout out to the chamber. I, I don't know how they get it to go so smoothly when you've got floats in so many different areas. And then it all, it all works out and that we, there, it was very well attended and got many people that were very happy that we have such a large and exciting parade.
Very good. Yes, it was an excellent parade. Thank you to all the volunteers and in particular, because I chatted with her about this on Saturday night and again today. Kudos to our police department for helping to organize and assist with the holiday parade, specifically Sergeant Hartwig, who I believe put in significant time assisting with that event. Our last discussion item is, is winter parking restrictions. I believe I was the one who added this to, or requested to be added to the agenda. Who wants to kick this off? And again, I'll, I'll preface, during my tenure as mayor, we've been, I think, very courteous and understanding to our residents and business owners. We've tried to encourage compliance, removal of vehicles from the street in advance of, of significant snow events by putting polite notices on, on Facebook, on, on the web, using our, our media contacts. And my own observation is we still have a significant number of people who are not in compliance. And as a result, it makes exceedingly difficult for our DPW crews to effectively plow and salt streets. So I don't know what, what staff's perspective is, is on this. I suspect we, there's some policy or ordinance changes that may need to be developed. I would also note, because this was brought up, I think, with Ms. Dillon, when we reviewed the agenda last Wednesday, the city charter actually requires that the mayor, not staff, declare a snow emergency. And so we'll obviously abide by that standard for the time being, but that is something that I would like our forthcoming charter review committee to look at, because I think the best practice would be to have the city manager in consultation with staff make that determination in the future, not the mayor's office.
For sure. So to start, it, it will likely need to be an ordinance change, and that's something that I'll be working on in conjunction with Chief Radzik and city manager O'Toole. As for the charter change, I think that would be best served by city manager O'Toole.
And I don't know, Chief Radzik, if you want to weigh in, the county obviously has some triggers. They have their own emergency, snow plan, and it may be better, actually, their plan specifically references that they'd like us to adopt ordinances that match the language that they use.
Yes, and I just forwarded, actually, today it came out, that we've been working with the county and, I mean, all the chiefs in Wasna County to develop a emergency snow plan. I just forwarded it to the city manager this morning, and it does speak to the ordinances and what code yellow and code red and code orange means. So I think if we're on a consistent basis throughout the county, when one calls, whether it's, you know, the county commissioners or whomever is tasked with declaring the snow emergency, then we'll work with DPW. But I, I do think, obviously, that when we have inclement weather, our police officers are tied up with crashes and other things. So sticking stickers on cars saying, please move, and if you don't within 48 hours, it's not working. And talking with Larry Searls, it's a burden on DPW as well. I did a little bit of research on how other communities handle this, and there is an app. I, I brought Shonk into the conversation too, so you could pull up on your phone and we would notify when you can't park on a certain street. And it also allows for a certain amount of time for a second round to clean up on that street. So everybody would be notified that they need to move their cars. It's just a work in progress at this point.
I mean, you, you can cut this round, you can cut this flat. I'm not going to get deep into the weeds because it's not my job. I'd leave that to city staff. What I do know is we, as a community, just need to do a better job of getting residents to remove vehicles from streets in advance of, of DPW plowing and salting. Because I habitually see vehicles that belong to homeowners who have access to a driveway in the street, and then there's a big mound of snow, and it, again, it inhibits our, our crews, their ability to, to effectively salt and, and plow streets. And that's a public safety issue.
Yes.
So Director Searls, any, any additional comments?
Uh, yes, I, I have seen a little bit of ordinances about what happens when a snow emergency is declared, and that's when you get into the ticketing and towing, like the chief said. That's right when they're really busy with accidents and everything. But sometimes, some of that on-street parking is a little strategic because they don't want the snow in their driveway. Something that we'd like to see the residents do is shovel with the flow of traffic. You shovel to the flow of traffic so that's less that's going to hit your approach. Give us time to make our second pass before you come out and fine tune the end of your driveway, because we usually fill it twice. If it's an ongoing snow, we might get you a third time to make everybody mad. But it, it does help to shovel with the flow of traffic. Don't shovel it back out into the road, because what goes in the road when we come by with our underbodies will go right back in your driveway. Clear off around your mailboxes, that helps. But maybe we could put our written policy together on the website and if we want to follow county, even, even, even as a suggestion on the tiers, we could, we could make it on, on all our medias. You know, this is an orange, a yellow or a red, snow event. Get your cars off the road, help us, help you, and everyone's safer.
Could, could we expect an update and maybe some proposed changes to our existing policy at one of our meetings in January? I believe they're back to back. Is that reasonable?
Yeah, it's very reasonable.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll get something for you to review early.
Good. Any questions from the DA's? No? Or Ms. Dillon?
No, just, this is a comment to that, yeah, the sooner the better, because I just read an article that said that we're supposed to just be, it's supposed to be a very snowy Michigan winter.
We're just going to cancel snow. But yeah, I, I have something half-baked already.
This is an item that I would probably bring directly to council rather than go to code review, given that...
Yeah, there's a timing issue here.
Right, that's, that's, just confirming.
Yep. Keep code review in the loop or have Mr. Del Orco report out on it at their meetings. But yeah, this is a, let's get this done.
I support it coming straight to council. It'll take too long to go through code review.
Yep.
So the other part, I apologize, mayor, I wanted to mention was to segue into that and notifying people, this was a conversation that the mayor and the city manager and I had had just recently about, the city currently utilizes the 4011 system, it's a texting thing. Whether that's the best use of it, that's the technology that we have right now, and that may be creating some opportunities for people every time we have meetings to have kiosks so that people can sign up. Because the key to people following the rules is they need to know that the rules are in effect. And so we have to find ways to push it out. And at least with these texting mechanisms, you don't even have to have a smartphone, you just have to have a phone that texts. And if we can just make it that easy, where there's going to be notifications, where, you know, we're having snow emergencies or whatever, please move your vehicles, so that people know, because once again, as we always say, not everybody's on Facebook.
Yep. Yeah, and, and also to speak on that, the My Water Advisor, Water Dashboard, we can communicate with that too, directly, to everyone that signs up. So every, every media we can, we can just blast it.
Any additional comments or questions? No? Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Searls. Thank you, Chief Radzik. Ben, appreciate it. Um, is there anything further brought before city council this evening? Mayor Potem Girba?
Um, I just want to, in full transparency and understanding for our community, we received a email from our council colleague, Dawn Kraus, indicating that she has 99.9% moved out of the city of Celine. And even though that she does believe that she still has residential status in our community, that is in violation or in conflict with our city charter. And so although the mayor, I believe, has worked with her in terms of determining the status, it's been determined that for us to proceed in any kind of legal proceedings or such, considering that there's only one additional meeting left, it would behoove the city in terms of expenditures and whatever to proceed this. But I believe that we need to be quite straightforward with this, as this is a concern that has been brought to our attention by other individuals. And if our city manager wants to explain anything further, residency is identified as basically where you sleep, not where you hold an address. And as a result, our attorneys have given us that advice, I believe.
Okay. Anything else this evening? No, thank you. Then please note our upcoming meetings on December the 19th with a work meeting at 5:00, not 6:00, to discuss operational and cost efficiencies. We are also discussing city manager O'Toole community events at that time?
Yes.
Okay. But the bulk of that conversation will focus on the, the former in light of the dip in our, in our fund balance. And then on January 9th, we actually have our first council retreat strategic planning session. That's just council and department heads at 5:30 and then our regular meeting at 7:00.